All right, it is 6:00 PM and we are calling this meeting to order. We are starting a bit early today because we have a GAD meeting. I see that it looks like we have a number of students here.
Why can't we hear ourselves?
I think it was... So if I, I know at least one of the students, but welcome. This is, you are here of your own volition, not on any assignment, I'm sure. So we will start with a call to order and the roll call.
Councilmember Clovin.
I'm here.
Councilmember Tillman.
Here.
Councilmember Trippiano.
Here.
Vice Mayor Diaz.
Yes.
Mayor Wan.
And I am here. Next is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is item three, public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anything that is not on the agenda that anyone would like to make a comment on, now is the time.
Point of order, Mayor, I just have a quick question. Since we're now on the actual agenda items, is it possible to move this non-agenda public comments to after the GAD, since it's probably going to be closer to the regular time that we start our meetings? I'm just concerned that people aren't going to expect us to have done that already, since we're really changing the order and moved it all up by an hour. Just a request.
I think I would proceed with the regular thing and then if folks have comments that they want on any of the things that are on the agenda, then I think that'd be an appropriate time. We have this here, non-agenda, as well as at the GAD meeting, so.
Is this where non-agenda items are right now?
That is correct. I can't hear you, actually. Sure. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do have a speaker card from Keith.
Mr. Hayden, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you, Keith Hayden, 1542 O'Hara. I want to address the Council again on Brett Prebilla's performance. Concerned that it's very late in the agenda, so I do want to get a few comments in, not have to wait until late, late in tonight's agenda. I was particularly encouraged when I saw letters coming in from the staff, which is very unusual to see that level of support from a staff, and particularly in Clayton with the turnover that we've had here. So I think most people that have interacted with Brett have been very impressed with his desire to learn more about Clayton. He holds the meet and greet to reach out and get actual input from residents. He puts out the city manager's report, which is very, very informative, not only touching on city issues, but also introducing us to employees that work for the city, which really helps us understand the staff that we have working on our behalf. So Brett continues to grow in the job. His expertise, we see displayed in just about every item that he's touching. Certainly, the staff reports that are being submitted are very professionally done. I'm concerned that in some cases, those staff reports are questioned in an open forum here at the council level, and I would suggest that you follow the example set with previous city councils. And when you do have questions about staff reports, you deal with that prior to the city council meetings, so that the meetings themselves are more effective and efficient, and you often get those questions answered. And by questioning the city staff in open meetings, it sometimes creates some feeling that the expertise of the city staff needs to be questioned. And that's the wrong impression to give when it's normally not a question about their expertise. So just suggest that you work closely with city staff, create the teamwork that's necessary to get the job done. One other item I want to address is the efforts the city council has initiated to try to close this revenue gap and our budget gap. And one of the items that I saw proposed some time ago was the Financial Sustainability Committee, which I thought was an excellent idea, bringing in expertise that resides out there in the community and creating a committee of volunteers. And understand that you did interview four or five candidates. You did not get the five members that you could appoint that you wanted to. So apparently, that's now just been put on the shelf. And I would encourage you to take that back and try to initiate an action that follows through on that topic of getting input from financial experts in our community. And there are quite a few, and you did have at least three that did volunteer. So I think that would be very helpful, and that's a critical need that the city has. And we should open doors to any input that the council can receive from those financial experts, in addition to your very experienced staff. And we're very glad that we're not seeing the turnover that was happening way too often in the past, and we have a very good qualified staff in place. And thank you again for hiring Brett, and let's keep him on the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we displaying the timer?
I forgot to put the timer up, but I did have it on my watch after I forgot to display the timer. So if you don't see it on the screen.
Thank you.
You'll still get a clear sound. We have another speaker card from Jim Killoran.
Good day, Council. Just to answer your question, Keith, I did apply to the Financial Sustainability Committee, but I believe my 30 years of corporate finance at Chevron Finance Group and also corporate compliance and governance, and also being on a financial oversight committee for over a decade for a large bank, was not good enough for Mr. Wan. And I think that's very disappointing, but I also understand there was turnover at that point in time, where we didn't have a city manager in or a city finance manager. The offer's still there, but I also understand that there may be other priorities. So the reason I'm here talking about a non-agenda item here is that I had met with my brother-in-law, who was a Stanford undergraduate in engineering and also graduated Kellogg's Business School. He decided at the age of 40 to become a police officer because of 9/11. So he also was in charge of recruitment for San Jose Police Department. So we're talking about salaries for the Clayton Police Department, and because we're having troubles recruiting right now. And I can just tell you, it's laughable what's going on with our salaries here in the city in general. It's not police, it's with every position. For three decades, what we have done in this city is we've run a sweatshop. We balance our budgets through underpaying our employees significantly by deferring maintenance and by also making sure we don't do capital infrastructure. Now, because of the pandemic, what's happened is it's a trigger event. And that trigger event has caused all the employees, let me just say to you, all the people in the age 58 to 70 crowd to retire. Those people are our most productive folks, the baby boomers, productive and cheap labor. And that has really hurt police services, but also government services, which are very technical jobs. We need to increase the pay for city employees, especially police. Do you understand when people graduate from the police academy, they are being paid six figures? There's very few of them going in because of all the issues that are involved. You have to pass a drug profile test. You have to pass a physical. You have to pass a psychological file, um, profile, and you have to do a lot of other things and get through six months of the academy. And once they get through that academy in San Jose, what's happening in there is they're getting, they're going to be paid in the low six figures, and guess what's happening? They're being poached by other cities. And San Jose is a good city to work for. So look, I don't know if we need to get to the high, the high, you know, let me say, to the six figures, but we got to get close to it. And that means it's going to be a danger, daisy chain reaction. That means we have to get the employees that are experienced more money. Otherwise, they're going to leave this city, which is what they're doing. I don't know how I can emphasize to each, you have to deal with this issue, or it's going to collapse next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speaker cards?
Mayor Wan, I have no other speaker cards. And as of right now, I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
All right, well, then I will close public comment. And we will recess the city council meeting and move directly into the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District Board Meeting, the GAD, and I will turn it over to Board Chair Trippiano to lead us.
Thank you, Mayor Wan. And it is 6:10, and I'm going to call the GAD meeting to order and may we do roll call?
Board Member Diaz. Board Member Tillman.
Here.
Board Member Wan.
Here.
Vice Chair Clovin.
I'm here.
Chair Trippiano.
Here. Thank you. And at this time, I will allow for a public comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone, do we have any speaker cards? We do.
Jim?
Mr. Killoran.
I can defer this to the public comment to the Oakhurst, but it also deals with the Olivia Project, so it's, it's your, it's, it's a mix of two. So what would you prefer me to do here?
The preference is yours.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me pull up my, so I want to share a conversation I had on Nextdoor today regarding the Olivia Project in the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District. And this was addressed to Bill Walcutt, who was a former mayor of Clayton and who served on the councils in the 1990s. Bill, I find it ironic, you never discussed your hand at the build out of the 1,400 homes in the Oakhurst development of Clayton in the 1990s. A strong argument could be made, the Oakhurst master developer caused havoc in our community as a council you were on completely checked out on the engineering oversight and proper build out. Homeowners in this district had to pay out of pocket for the numerous French drains, some pumps, foundation repairs, and tourney costs to sue the developer. I am glad this form of turmoil has passed. However, Oakhurst homeowners continue to be blessed with a broke geological hazard abatement district. Another argument could be made that the district would be flushed with reserves and proper maintenance being done if the council in the 90s had ensured risks, areas of risk were not built or had been properly mitigated. But the pragmatic, correct argument is our small city has always lacked financial resources to fight deep-pocket development and ensure the proper outcome for the community. Brett, our new city manager, is aware of the history of the Oakhurst development and all developer schemes. In contrast to the handling of the Oakhurst development, I have confidence in Brett and our city workers will ensure the Olivia Project is done by code with no exceptions to the developer unless the council approves. No one steamrolls Brett, and that's based on my discussions with him at the sip and coffees. Now, other things I could add in here is moving to other relevant facts about your Jihad decision tonight. Over half the homes in this district do not have hillside risk. The other half the district with varying degrees of risk want to self-insure against landslides. So educating folks will not lead to approve higher Jihad assessments. Ditch maintenance should be the only priority of the Jihad assessments because everyone who has risk believes in self-insuring. So let's eliminate the administrative costs for this district so this work is routinely performed. Homeowners are responsible for disclosing they are part of the Jihad. And buyers in the Oakhurst Division are aware of the self-insuring risk in these hillsides. So again, I know you have a difficult decision here, but people are aware of these risks. The challenge that you do have is if a landslide happens on a street and that impacts the utilities that are the underground utilities, but you're not going to be able to get that, that parcel tax approved because of the 800 homes that don't have risk and they were included in this district. So again, thank you for everybody's time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Killoran. Are there any other cards on this, comment cards on this issue?
I do not have any other speaker cards, and I do not have the hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on non-agenda items and move to item number three, which is the consent calendar. And we do not have anything on the consent calendar. Item number four is public hearings. We do not have any public hearings. And so we move on to item number five, and our city engineer, Larry Thies, will provide us an update. Thank you, Larry.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for the record, Larry Thies, city engineer, GAD manager. I bring before you a staff report tonight. Primarily, it's an update on its, our current budget status for this fiscal year. In the past GAD meetings, we had discussed pursuing a future ballot measure or ballot vote of the GAD property owners to increase the assessments to address the underfunding of the level of service that's required in the existing plan of control. We are moving along in that process. Our last meeting, we had a placeholder budget amount relative to the ballot measure component. I would break it down into really two elements. One is the actual administration of, you know, preparing a ballot, going through the mailing of the ballots, tabulating, coming up with the language for the, the vote, and also having the discussion as to what the measure is going to request of the voters. That's the more administrative end. The engineering element is the plan of control, which is, there's an existing one from 1990. It's relatively brief, which describes the level of maintenance, the responsibilities of the GAD, what remediation elements would be performed if there was a slide, those elements. At the suggestion or the recommendation of Franciscan Associates, who's performing the administrative element of this process, they recommended that we update the plan of control. And so that involves a geotechnical engineer and a geologist. So we have BSK as our subconsultant who is performing that service, and you've met them before. I did request that they come up with a scope of work and a fee for the, either preparing a brand-new plan of control or amending the existing plan of control. And so we have an updated budget. That budget requires an increase in the cost based off that scope of work. So the element of going for the ballot measure, along with updating the plan of control, is now estimated around $52,000. Previously, as our placeholder number was around 33. So I'm coming before the board to update you, also get concurrence on if we'd like to still proceed. Right now, my recommendation is that based off our last meeting, we had set aside roughly about $25,000 from what we were originally going to consider for like inclinometer monitoring, these, you know, more in-the-field elements. And the board directed us to use that as a placeholder for education for the voters, essentially meetings, mailers. You can't advocate for a specific vote, but you need, you can educate the voters within the GAD to what the, what they are voting on relative to what amount and what level of service. So at this point, that $25,000, I'm recommending it be reduced to about $6,000 and that other $19,000 be shifted to the plan of control and slash administrative function, so we can start that process. We have not, you know, given the authorization to proceed for either. I wanted to come back to the board to make sure everyone is aware of this change and also is in concurrence. And then the other element is I do believe the $6,000 for the education slash outreach element is probably low. At a future meeting, we can decide what other maybe elements that the board would feel is necessary to properly educate, so that way there's a good chance for the measure to be at least considered appropriately by all the voters. And if there's certain specific targets we'd like to perform. At this point, I would say with a $6,000 remaining budget for education, it's probably a mailer with a link on that mailer, you know, a postcard-type mailer that would give a link to the city's website about this specific, what's being asked of the cost, what elements are going to be included in the GAD maintenance. That's the level I would estimate about the $6,000 would be available. But if the board does decide, and I'm not asking tonight, but in the future, that they would like to have some public meetings, some maybe neighborhood meetings in the GAD areas, those elements may cost a little bit more. And I would suggest if the board would like to pursue that at a future meeting, that, you know, this, this, the board could consider sort of barring against its future assessments. It probably would be a limited amount, but essentially if this assessment or this ballot vote doesn't pass, I think you're, as a board, you're going to have to decide what you're going to do because it's not sustainable anyway. So I do think it's an element of your, kind of your last, well, not last, but one of your best efforts to pursue this again and then see what happens, you know, or then change for the future and then maybe reconsider it again in the, you know, down the road. But I think based off prior votes and not having passed, I'm sure that is something that's happened before. So I'm hoping tonight that I get feedback that the, the board would like to continue pursuit, and I'm happy to take any questions on the elements that are being, in terms of the cost and the budget and scope of work for the administration of the ballot measure and also the plan of control. So, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. So what questions do we have?
So I'm kind of curious about the plan of control in general and what it is and what the budget is for and what would be the outcome from, for, from it, please. I need even more detail.
So the existing plan of control from 1990, I would say breaks down into its legal responsibilities. When a certain event in, in the existing plan of control, if a slide or they describe ground movement occurs that affects more than one parcel, then the GAD has responsibilities to come in and address the ground movement. And that could be as small ground movement or houses are sliding down the hill, you know, those situations. It also is triggered when there is impacts within the considerable open space that the GAD owns. And if that impacts a adjacent single-family home or a property, then that would also trigger the city, or I'm sorry, the GAD to come in to remedy the situation. The other, so that's kind of the, if something has happened, the, the GAD steps in. There are a lot of monitoring and maintenance elements that are described in the current plan of control. That's where it talks about doing an annual report, also having the visual inspections twice a year. It doesn't specifically say what times a year, but we've generally elected October, November, right before the rainy season, then after the rainy season. Those are the existing components. I would say, and I'm very broad rushing here, but what is described in the existing plan of control, the current assessments that are collected cannot cover the cost of the, performing those requirements, let alone set aside money for potentially dealing with a landslide. Most GADS are, have not only the maintenance monitoring element to try to address issues before they become bad, but they also set aside money for a reserve for the rainy day event of when there is a slide. So it's, those are the two-pronged real issues that most GADS are dealing with. There are usually some other elements. Drainage is very heavily associated with ground movement, so any drainage-type improvements are usually covered in a plan of control. At this time, our intention is to draft a plan of control with a, what we think would be the most appropriate way to deal with the existing open space and the entire district from an engineering perspective, what we would recommend in terms of the, the amount of monitoring, what the reserve should be, those elements. I think we will present to that, to the board at a future meeting in January, December, December, January. And we anticipate there's a cost associated with that, and the board will have to have a discussion, and I will have that discussion from the staff perspective of what elements and what that cost is, and is there certain things you'd like to add or subtract? And I think that iterative process will then get us to what eventually the board will be asking of the, the 1,400 property owners, what, what an increase in assessment would be. So I think our initial intention is to provide you the initial recommendation. I do think, you know, the existing plan of control, despite it being underfunded, is probably, you know, a relatively reasonable, in line with other GAD-type level of service. So I don't anticipate we would, it's, it is overly burdensome now. You know, I, I think it is pretty typical of most GADS of what's required, and it doesn't set a specific reserve, you know, in the plan of control. That is a board decision, but I do think that is a big element of what you're going to be asking potential voters to be voting on, because that will be part of the dollar amounts.
And just to follow up on that, would the plan of control that is being thought about, being redone, does it have any basis on the fiscal viability of the GAD at all?
Our initial approach is to give us, give the board the engineering and best practice recommendation of how to operate the, the GAD properly, regardless of the assessed amount that would be required. I understand that it is something that probably will have to go hand in hand, because you do want to try to make sure this thing passes, or at least is viable to pass. But our, I think it's initially important as the engineers or the geotecs to, to provide the board the technical elements of why certain things or a certain level of monitoring or certain level of response is necessary. And, you know, I think we had some of this discussion at a prior GAD meeting a few months ago about can you monitor once a year versus twice a year? And maybe you, if it's not a heavy storm year, you do it once a year right before the storm, and then if you don't hear much of an issue, then you're not required to go out a second time. But you can always go out a second time if you had a large storm and you're seeing a lot of impacts, and so that particular, you do extra, so to speak, beyond the plan of control. That's one, you know, example, small example that could be considered, you know, from a, you know, a reasonable engineering perspective of evaluating the, not only the facilities, but the risk that's inherent there.
So I respect your engineering opinion, and I truly do. But I heard you say earlier that the 1990 plan of control was actually pretty good and addressed our needs. So I'm trying to figure out why we should spend additional $30,000 to update it somewhat to give to the residents. So can you explain to me why it's important to do that and why you're recommending that? Because I don't see the value in it at this point, and that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I think my initial thought with this was that this plan of control will be an iterative process, and it might not necessarily be $25,000 of the $30,000 is spent in preparing the first draft. I, I do think the way the scope of work is set up is, there's anticipated at least a couple of meetings that the staff and BSK will need to attend with the board to have discussions as to the level. I, I think it would help, you know, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. I, I do think we would approach this as we're not looking to change that much initially and not spending a lot to rewrite the same words. I do think it needs some updates. It's, you know, 30 years old and there's, but the basic premise of what triggers those type of things, I would generally probably leave in and then have the discussion as to, okay, yeah, we, we've updated it, it's not the $30,000 update, but we are going to have to have the discussion as to, okay, to implement this. to implement this, it costs X. And it's, if that's beyond what the voters could reasonably probably vote to pass, then you may want to consider something that is less than that. So I, I would say it's a very fair question. Our, our intention is not to front-load the rewriting of the plan of control. I think it's more to update it. Now, if there is, you know, like I said, I don't want to get the carpe for the horse, but if there's definitely feedback as to, no, we really need to consider changes, strongly consider changes because we want to dial back, I, I would assume, then I'll take that advice and we could take that from day one. But I think our initial thought is, okay, let's re-present this, touch it, make some things a little bit more specific that are not really addressed in the 1990s plan of control and then present it to the board. So I, I understand your concern of reinventing the wheel and not, and paying the same amount. What I can assure you is our intention is to keep it pretty simple at the very beginning.
Thank you.
Well, and that was kind of what I was asking. I sent Larry a ton of questions yesterday, and thank you for answering them. Was the plan of control different than the actual scope of work that's being performed? And the plan of control is completely separate than the actual physical work being done?
That is correct. So the, the budget amount is relative to just the preparation and the finalization of the report, ah, sorry, the plan of control. The work elements within the plan of control would be in a separate budget. For example, in the existing budget right now, I mean, you can see that in the attachment. There's $30,000 set aside for engineering inspection services for the October site visit. BSK, that's not just in October, but they're, they've, they're holding off on actually doing the inspection. The maintenance crews are going out and clearing all the ditches. And then the, the geotechnical firm will go out following that. So it's probably in the next week or so. They do a site visit, they document what they see, provide the feedback to myself and the maintenance group. They also then have to prepare the annual report, which we bring before, before the board usually in the spring timeframe. And so that, that work is part of the existing plan of control so that, you know, there is a separate budget for the actual field work. That's continuing to go on regardless of this potential change of plan of control.
Thank you, Larry. Any other questions?
What, what happens if the GAD is unable to perform the level of service that's in the plan of control?
Well, I think, I'm not going to speak to the legality of it. That's certainly a different area than my expertise. But if it's unable to, to address, you know, what the required elements of the plan and control are, first, you're increasing your potential risk, obviously, out in the field. You're either not seeing a potential issue because you're not out there. You're not mitigating the risks, so they may be building up over time. And then if something happens, right, in terms of a landslide, I would imagine there's going to be lawsuits no matter what. And then the, the GAD will likely be named in a lawsuit in that particular case. And it has a financial, you know, a responsibility relative to the district. You know, that's developed in the plan of control that, you know, the city, I'm sorry, the GAD would be responsible to address in the field. So, you know, if it, for example, in the existing plan of control, if it's in the open space all by itself, isn't affecting any single-family home or any property, the GAD probably could decide if it wants to address it or not, you know, if it has any risk to any other, you know, properties. But if it's under a street, which is probably next to a, some single-family homes or whatever, a multifamily home, then the responsibility within the street is going to be addressed. And then also those property owners, if it's a landslide movement, will come and have the GAD address their foundational issues, right? That's what the GAD's responsibility is right now. The assessments in general.
Can I, can I interrupt you for a second? So, but if the GAD doesn't have the funds to do an activity that is required, be it repair after a slide or even perform maintenance, whatever it happens to be, what is the recourse of the residents in the GAD if there is no money to perform that action?
Well, I, I think, and I don't know exactly what was the process when other homes along Keylock had issues. You know, this is what, 20 something years ago, 25 years ago? But they would sue the city, sorry, they'd sue the city and the GAD. GAD is technically a separate entity. The GAD would then have to address, you know, whatever lawsuit. We'd have to contact our insurer relative to that. I'm sure the city will get pulled in or at least named. And then that's when you're going to have to, you know, be very specific that they're two separate entities. I do think there would be political pressure or just general pressure that the city has to step in because, you know, they are two separate entities, but definitely very tied together. So those are the concerns I would have if, you know, a landslide occurred today.
So what you're, one of the things that you're proposing is updating the plan of control. If there's a risk of not performing the duties in the plan of control, is it an option to just curtail the required activities of the plan of control so substantially that the GAD then has enough money to fund those activities?
I, I think that's the discussion point that this board should have. What, what responsibilities you would like to sign up for going forward and what those sort of costs associated with it would be put before the voters. Right now, the plan of control, like I mentioned, has activities and requirements that I believe is not properly funded today. But I do think, you know, there is, that's why it's important to have this plan of control discussion as to going forward, what, what does this GAD want to commit itself to in terms of maintenance, risks, its remediation requirements? And I think that's the element that I understand is going to be, it goes with cost. They're hand in hand, right? And so I'm very sensitive to that fact, and I think having that discussion is going to come to the forefront very soon.
So it, follow up, does the GAD board have the option through the plan of control to update it to the extent that it has very little required activity?
I think you have latitude to adjust what the plan of control has. I can't speak to the legality of the minimum requirements that I will, you know.
Can we take that as a follow-up?
I think that's a reasonable discussion, right? But I don't know that off the top of my head today.
Sure, that's fine.
But yes, I think you have, as a board, you have, you know, that's your duty is to decide what your services you're providing relative to these property owner benefits that these particular homeowners are getting.
Because as we talk about going to the households, if it, if we, two scenarios, either it passes or it doesn't. If it doesn't, what options do we have after that? I mean, it seems like curtailing the level of service is the only remaining option.
Yes, I, I believe that. I think it would be very hard to disband the GAD at this point. But you can be very specific that the level of service, just like any other district, right? The street, streetlight district is another district. That one is sort of more impactful, right? People see the street light goes out. I understand the GAD, you don't turn off the landslide risk. It, it just happens at some point. Those are elements I think, yeah, you, you would consider as a GAD, like what, if we're not providing answers. I think the risk is always going to be there and that comes. It's probably more the maintenance and monitoring of how much you want to prevent the risk or to be able to be aware of it that's costing some money. It's, you know, of course, when the slide happens, those are the million-dollar elements. But the tens of thousands, hundred thousand things that you need to be doing on an annual basis can't get done right now because you're collecting just shy of $50,000 a year.
So then the follow-up is what level of funding is being targeted in the efforts that are described in the staff report?
So like I mentioned, it's dependent on the plan of control. But in my, our prior meetings, you know, I had roughly estimated in order to sort of properly run the GAD at its existing plan of control requirements, I think you're in a range of a factor of 10. And I know it sounds like a lot, but you need to be in the range of like 300 to 500,000 dollars a year as opposed to $50,000 a year to give as a, a very rough scale. Because we've talked about inclinometers, all these elements that we've talked about previously. When you add all those things up, it's in that sort of range. I think as a, a member of the public mentioned before, the risk within the GAD is different for different homes. You know, there's definitely homes within the flat areas versus the hills. And so, and they are being assessed at different rates currently. So there is an element already that takes that into account. But those things will have to be hashed out as part of the going to the ballot, recognizing, look, the folks that are at higher risk are probably going to need the service more, more likely than not, and benefit potentially more. So those are things I think if we were to go with the existing plan of control, that's the sort of magnitude we're thinking. And obviously that, you know, it's not a straight times 10 for everybody. I do think it will be somewhat graduated, but I, I wanted to give you sort of a magnitude.
If we, if we advance something like 10X, I think that would be a, a large hurdle to overcome. Would it make sense to look at the plan of control first to figure out what, what level of service yields a more reasonable increase that is more palatable? Is that part of the work that's included here?
Yes, as Vice Chair Cloven mentioned, I, I think our intention tonight is to make sure we're still on board with sort of shifting the dollar amounts. But I do think the bulk of this effort is this discussion of the plan of control. And I don't want to spend, like I said, the initial thought would be to bring something similar to the existing one and then give you options as to, okay, what elements would you consider or want to consider that would reduce the sort of assessment costs across the board? I recognize that, I mean, you don't want to put out the Cadillac version and then no one's going to buy it, right? So I think our initial thought would be keep it simple because we do need to make very difficult decisions as to what level of service you want to provide in the GAD.
When does that happen?
This is the December, January timeframe. I, I think we'd like to do it in one meeting. I don't know if we could do it in one meeting because it's, it will be hard. But that's our intention is to get, you know, like making the tough decisions to say, yeah, you know, this is not, this is what we think is reasonable and also what we think is manageable from a financial standpoint. And my intention is not to spend the $30,000 before that meeting. I think our intention is we'll bring back an initial draft, knowing that we probably were going to spend a good amount of time making choices on it. So, and then having to come back, edit it, bring it back. And I, I do think most of this cost is probably backloaded in this process.
Okay. And Larry, I have one other follow-up question. So is it plan, is the sequence of events, plan of control, scope of work, maybe with options before we go to a ballot measure?
Absolutely. You need the plan of control finalized, and then that technically becomes part of your engineer's report. The engineer's report is in the code, the actual legal document that has to be associated with a ballot or, and, you know, we do an engineer's report every year for collecting assessments. So the existing engineer report references the plan of control. And the, the thought is this new engineer's report would say, hey, based off of this plan of control, we think it's going to be this dollar amount when we go out to, the board will have to approve proposing a new assessment, and then we'll go through the ballot process. Now, I will say, there is no back-end time limit. Right now, we do, we are trying not to miss August of next year when you have to put it on the tax roll. So, but if you miss that tax roll, it's just another year later, right? But we didn't want to miss that opportunity so that, it is going to be tight. Like we get through this plan of control process in January, maybe into February. Then we have to do the engineer's report. And then you're starting your education and, you know, having the meetings. And typically, we're doing the, the regular, just, you know, cost of living increase, engineer's report starting in, you know, May. So you're already kind of in that timeframe. But we recognize you're probably going to either need more meetings or education elements to, to let people know, you know, the 1,400 property owners, hey, this is going to be mailed to your house. You need to decide and, and return this ballot by a certain date.
And do you think at a future meeting you'll have that timeline for us so we kind of have a sense of?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do. You had mentioned earlier that something about the disbandment of the GAD. Are you saying that that's not an option?
I haven't researched specifically how to disband the GAD, but I would say it's difficult because, one, the, the responsibility that's still going to be left because it's really a lot of open space out there. And at that point, if the GAD is not an entity that owns it, who's going to own it, right? And then it might fall to the city, which in all honesty, that's why you set up a GAD initially is to, to create some buffer and to have a separate funding entity for it. Otherwise, you know, you're not going to hand it over to a private property owner or anything like that. It's, that's going to be unlikely. Plus, you know, the, the reason it is open space is it's, you know, has some geologic hazards. It's known, right? Because, I mean, it's just natural landslides out there. And so that's why I think it's, I don't know if you can, it's not so much the process, it's the, what you end up out of the process that it makes it very unpalatable.
Okay, that's helpful. My other things are for discussion, so thank you for answering that.
Any other questions? Okay, and then I guess we are opening it up for public comment at this time. Do we have any speaker cards?
No speaker cards on this item.
And is anyone on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom.
No hands raised on Zoom. Okay. And I will close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion. Any comments, final thoughts?
I'm, I'm okay with the recommendation by staff as presented, and we'll get more information later on.
More info sounds great, but I, it doesn't sit well to just keep throwing more money after, well, after this. I, I know that we need to know what the answers are, but I just don't see, if we already have a plan of control from the 1990s and we can't even do any of the work that's listed in there, it's just difficult, I, I, it's difficult for me to rationalize continuing on. I, I understand we can't disband it. I understand there's risk with that. It just seems odd. We can't even do something from 1990 and it's 2023. In, in looking at the current assessments at almost 50,000, so $49,000, 30,000 of it goes to just the inspection once a year. And if we don't get them to increase it, or there are homeowners who don't want to increase increase it, or there are homeowners who don't want to increase it, what are we doing? Like, what do we do at that point? So I, I'm all about educating the community. I, I get that, but it just seems bizarre that we are where we are and that this has not been addressed fully before today, as far as educating the community, et cetera. And I know that we have the in-depth conversations that we had in the spring. It just seems, I'm having a hard time throwing extra money after it.
I see this as essentially a last resort. If, if we don't put our best foot forward and present the best information, I think the only option would be to dramatically curtail the plan of control with the GAD to say like, the GAD prepares a report every year and that's about it. So, and that doesn't, I don't think there's really any other option.
I would say, Council, Board Member Tillman, I mean, having not been here through all those times, but essentially with Prop 218 having passed in that time period and between, you know, between when this was formed, it changed the landscape of how they could approach assessments. And in 1990, the, the approach was easier, so to speak. And then with subsequent votes, there, you know, they're, they haven't passed. I, I do think, yes, it is an element that has been kicked down the road for quite a bit. And yeah, I do think it would, I would recommend you take to the voters to give them opportunity. And then if there's a, you know, the vote doesn't pass, then you have your answer and, and you have to make decisions based off that. And right now, essentially, you know, I've mentioned this before, the amount that's being collected is basically all, all you could do to just administer running again, right? Getting the tax roll to even, you're collecting money to basically collect money to collect money again with just very minor elements that would be looked at, right? So, yeah, it is essentially no actual physical work being done out in the field in the future if you're just going to have this amount.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Second.
Do we need a motion?
I would prefer one. It would be, it would agree.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to make a motion that we are approving that we, the district will be moving forward with an expenditure for an updated plan of control? Oh, Brad, I thought you were going to say something. No, okay. With an updated plan of control that we will review at a future meeting in December or January at the cost of potentially $30,000.
Thank you.
I second.
Shall we do a roll call? Sorry.
Board Member Diaz.
Yes.
I think you replied.
I acknowledge, yes.
We couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Board Member Tillman.
Yes.
Board Member Juan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Clovan.
Yes.
Chair Trupiano.
Yes. Thank you, Larry. And the next item on the agenda is future board items. Are there any requests beyond what we've discussed tonight? No? Okay. Then this meeting is adjourned at?
6:55.
6:55. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I think you, I think you turn it back over.
Oh, and I need to turn the meeting back over to our mayor?
All right. And so we will reconvene the city council meeting. That is item five. And as the time is 6:55, I will call a brief recess to 7 o'clock that we could come back and continue with the rest of the regular city council meeting. So, five minutes.
All right. It is 7 o'clock. Are we all, all good?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. It's 7 o'clock, and I will call us back to order from the brief recess as we reconvene the meeting from the GAD meeting we just had. Next on the agenda is item six, the consent calendar. Does anyone have any item that they'd like to pull from consent? Seeing none. Public comment on consent calendar. Any public comment on consent? Seeing none?
No cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Excellent. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Let's do this.
Councilmember Clovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Trupiano.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz.
Yes.
Mayor Juan.
Aye. All right, that passes. Next item is item seven, recognitions. This is for information only. We are recognizing Dutch American Heritage Day, November 16th, and Native American Heritage Month. Next is item eight, reports. Mr. City Manager.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Okay. We do not have any public hearings. Item 10A is, actually, item 10A is considering additional scope of work for the downtown pedestrian improvement project to add a crosswalk enhancement across Center Street and Center Street at Morris Street. I believe we are receiving a presentation from our city engineer, but we may have gone too fast. Oh, no, there he is. All right. Excellent.
Good evening again. So I'm here before the council to discuss Center Street and Morris Street crosswalk enhancements. It's an item that had been discussed at the council previous meeting. We currently have a downtown pedestrian improvement project that has crosswalk improvements at Center and Oak and Marsh Creek and Main Street. When we've had previous discussions about this project or in the CIP, there's been a request, the council to consider or at least get a scope of work and fee for adding Morris and Center Street. So this would be, there's an existing crosswalk at, what is it, the eastern leg of the intersection. It's a T intersection, and it'd be a cross-center. So we had our consultant who's doing the design and the traffic engineering for the rapid flashing beacon crosswalk and the civil improvements of raising it to sort of create a speed table also. There, they had estimate the additional cost would exceed the existing CIP budget by approximately $100,000. The actual improvements is a little bit more than $100,000, but based off of what we had already budgeted, there was a little bit of breathing room there. And so I'm bringing it back before the council to request if the council would like to proceed with this additional work, and then I can have it added to the plans. It would, currently it's being proposed to be taken additional funds out of the Measure J Fund, which is Fund 220. It's, there's currently approximately $100,000, a little over $100,000 that's unencumbered, that's not set aside for any particular project. So it would not impact any other existing projects or currently planned projects in the CIP. I would say that those funds could be used for paving. So, you know, there's always other potential uses for the funds as long as, in this particular case with Measure J, it's transportation-related. So I'm bringing this back for the council to seek your concurrence prior to us finalizing plans for the downtown pedestrian improvement project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Yeah, I have a question. Larry, have, have you looked at the intersection of Center and Marsh Creek? Because that just has stop signs, four-way stop signs there.
Correct.
And the reason why I ask is because when it gets dark at night, if people don't have bright clothes on, they have, they're very hard to see. And it would seem to me that maybe a traffic signal might work there as well or in, in, in exchange for the one that you're considering.
Well, we're not considering a traffic signal at Morris. It's one of the push button where they have the yellow flashing.
Something like that.
Yeah. We, the original two intersections, not quite sure how they were selected. They were before my time. I think it's one, the Oak Street-Center Street was related because there's a law school drop-off for Mount Diablo at the bottom of the hill. And then I believe the Main Street location at Marsh Creek was because of the trail coming in, the park, and the free right turn that comes. So I think one element also that would, these were chosen were to provide traffic calming elements to slow vehicles down because of the speed table, along with just, along with the flashing beacon. I would say that at Marsh Creek and Center, you already have stop control. So the, the use of a raised crosswalk, it, there are intersections with raised crosswalks at stop-controlled intersections, but it's probably less benefit for the dollars you're spending because everyone has to stop where the other ones, where we're placing them. Even though the Oak and Center, there is some stop control. We're actually placing a little bit up north of that intersection by the pedestrian bridge that comes in. So that's why those flashing beacons are there to help alert drivers that don't technically have to stop to, to make them aware there's someone's crossing. So at Morris and Center, Morris is stop-controlled where you have to make a right or a left, but Center is through movement. So I, I'm aware, because it's near the post office, that there probably, there are pedestrians and bicyclists that come from the back of High Street along a concrete path that leads them to that intersection. So it is a funnel point. So it, it tends to make more sense as a, it, it's not a mid-block crossing because it is at a T intersection, but it is sort of mid-downtown as opposed to Marsh Creek and Center. Now, it doesn't mean you couldn't consider it, but I do think the use of these elements are more appropriate for the sort of less controlled intersections than Marsh Creek.
Yeah, just, my only suggestion is just to keep it on the back burner in case things pick up there. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I'm pleased that this is back on here, so mine is more for discussion.
I just want to share two questions that I also sent to Larry yesterday, just that I wanted clarification on. So I asked, were there any pedestrian or traffic accidents in that vicinity and nothing in the last five years as that occurred? in the last five years, is that correct?
Correct. When I look at the, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, Switters and the TIBS data, there is no reported accident that the police would have gone out at that location in the last five years.
Okay. And the other thing that I think you just answered is that was, this additional $100,000, was it earmarked, or I guess it could be earmarked for other things, right now it's unencumbered, so it's up to our discretion?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then to your point about reported accidents, the reason why I brought it up is the previous owner of Grove Side Bistro had a bird's-eye view of that intersection, and she was the one who called my attention to it, in addition to me sitting out there of near misses. There was one particular child who almost got hit running across there, even though there is a crosswalk, because again, it's right by the park and cars are, in my opinion, they fly down the street. I guess if PD was sitting there, they might disagree and say that they're really only going 25 or maybe 30, maybe even 30, 34, but it's still fast when there's a park. So that was why I brought it to your attention and asked for this to be considered for that intersection.
I would add that because of the funneling nature of that location, it is probably, I would, I would prioritize it a little bit higher than other intersections in the downtown, just because of the nature of how it's configured, regardless of the speed. I, I do think because it's not stop-controlled, it provides an extra alert to drivers on a straightaway stretch, right? Either direction, they're, they're going pretty straight, and it, it just provides an ability to someone to be alerted, you know, where, you know, it just takes someone not paying attention to hit someone there.
What's the, can you provide a little background on the level of savings for this work by combining it with the other work that's already going on downtown? Like the net delta, like if you were to do this work separate from the other work, this is 100,000-ish, what would it be if the other work wasn't already happening?
I, I think you're probably saving roughly $50,000 in engineering and inspection by having it with the other projects. I, you know, I don't know exactly how much you would save in economy scale, the actual bid of construction. You might, you know, I would say probably 10%, you know, maybe 20% there, but it's really probably the engineering and inspection that you're, you're going to get the savings on by having it slightly larger, especially when you have inspection out there, you know, getting inspector to come out and doing this real small project will eat up your budget pretty quick. And you know, we were very cognizant of that, but if there's some more economy scale and there's other, there's more elements to be worked on, first, you'll potentially attract more inspection, you know, in your solicitation for RFP, in an RFP, but also if the contractor is working in multiple spots, it should go faster, right? As opposed to, it's just lining up day by day, and now you have, instead of, if it's overlapping, it could be 30 days, but if you, you know, lined them up end to end, it might be 50 days, right? So that's, that would be where I would say the saving is most prominent, is in the engineering and inspection.
Thank you. And then this is contemplating, just so I'm clear, push-button beacons with a raised, like a tabletop, so that those flashing things across the tabletop, is that what this is?
The, the, the crosswalk itself would be raised up similar to, there's one across Keller Ridge, it's not exactly like that one, but it would be the actual width of, between the crosswalk lines would be raised up. And what makes this Morris intersection a little bit more difficult is getting the drainage to work around it. It requires bulging out the, the corner where the bistro is, a little bit further out, so you don't have to touch the crosswalk across Morris, and it doesn't create a, a vertical difference. So it, you're, you're pushing out to connect to it, so that, that creates a little bit of additional cost. But those are the, that's the element relative to the concrete crosswalk. And then you would have on each side of the intersection a pole with a yellow pedestrian symbol, and then you'll have a push-button, and you'll have the back-to-back rectangular yellow lights that flash, that intermittently flash when you push the button. So there would not be any in-ground lights.
Okay. And did, was this the only option considered, like without the table topping and adjusting the existing sidewalk and the bulbing, like you said, could we just do the lights, or sorry, the poles with the light? And does that significantly impact the cost-scope of the project?
It would, it would reduce the, the cost significantly in terms of the construction. We, when we went to the designer, I asked them for a scope of work for similar in kind to the other intersections. But if you just put the lights in without the raised speed table or crosswalk, I forget exactly the cost of the, the light poles, but the light poles are probably in the $30,000 range. And so the other elements of the raising of the crosswalk, I, I can't remember exactly, but my guess is it's in the $50,000 range. So you would save money by not touching the actual physical ground in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Just to, other questions?
Just to follow up to that, then. The rationale for having it raised, then, is to control the speed of people coming down the street? As opposed to just having somebody push the button if they're trying to cross the street?
That would be one of the major benefits. I would say the other benefit is having it raised does improve the visibility of the person crossing. You know, I can't say how much, you know, six inches, not even quite six inches, but I, I think it's more that people become more aware that they have to slow down, right? Because, you know, most people driving in town are probably locals, and they probably drive that road very routinely, and then, just like when I drive up Keller Ridge, I know, oh, it's coming, so you know, you, you just tend to slow down. I think that's the other benefit you get.
All right, public comment on this item? If anyone has any public comment, now is the time. Seeing none?
And we, I do not have any speaker cards, and I do not have any hands raised on Zoom.
All right, then I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Who would like to start?
I'll start. Thank you, Larry, for bringing this back. As I mentioned, it was something that I was really concerned about, and when you had brought us the last scope of work for the other intersections, and I heard that there was the option to add in any others that you can look at, I quickly jumped on that and added this one. I do like that there's Measure J funds that are available, that are unencumbered, that we can use for this, which is great. And I do think that we are lucky that there haven't been any reportable accidents that have happened there yet. Keyword is "yet," and I think the goal, given our community with having not only youngsters, but also people who cross the street to get to the post office, I think that there'll probably be a lot more people utilizing it, knowing that they can safely get across there, because I do watch people who will sit and wait for an opening at the post office if they need to, to park on the street, just so they don't have to park in front of the park and cross, because it's dangerous. So I do like the idea that we're doing this and to support this, this capital improvement planned opportunity, and I hope that the others do as well.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I think it's a pretty good plan, so.
Then I'll make a motion. Do you need a motion? I think we do, right?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve the scope of work for the downtime, downtown pedestrian improvements project, excuse me, to add a raised crosswalk with rectangular rapid flashing beacons across Center Street at the Moore Street intersection and allocate additional and additional $100,000 to the project budget from Measure J, return to Source Fund 2020.
Second. Dana, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Wan?
Aye. With that, that closes item 10A. Next is item 10B, consider whether to continue the use of hybrid meetings for City Council Planning Commission and Budget Audit Committee meetings. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, before you, is a discussion for council to review the use of, as the mayor said, Zoom for our hybrid meetings. I will quickly turn it over to council for that discussion. The only thing staff would like council to consider in deliberation is if you decide to not allow public comment anymore, staff would like to maintain the Zoom feature for viewing at this point. We are, because we still have a vacant city clerk, we have not moved significantly forward on our Granicus project, and the streamings attached to that related to Granicus, and we are probably, you know, it was a five-to-six-month implementation, you know, whenever we get going, so we're probably into late spring now to get that done, and so keeping Zoom for viewing and our recording will be valuable in the interim. And if we have consultants or staff that need to present remotely, there's value to that as well. Once we get Granicus implemented, we'll decide, you know, the level and need of keeping Zoom for Planning Commission, City Council, and Budget Audit, related to more remote consultant presentations at that point. But for now, keeping it for viewing or recording is important if the council decides to no longer allow public comment in that form. And I'll turn it back to council.
Great. Why don't we go ahead and take public comment on this right now? And if anyone has any public comment, now is the time.
I do have a speaker card for Keith.
Okay. Mr. Haynes, you're up, and I think, Ms. D'Souza, if you have a speaker card, that would...
Yeah, I did.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, council. I was concerned when I saw that it's going to be discussed on removing the public comment element to Zoom. I think you and all legislative bodies have seen a tremendous increase in public participation once Zoom was made available. Many people are able to view and even comment now on activities, particularly in our town. With people still working and getting home a little bit late, sometimes it's difficult to get to the meeting on time and to present an actual presentation in person. And I think the Zoom feature is a very valuable feature to allow public participation, which should be the intent of those public comment opportunities. And it should not be limited and require people to come down and participate live to provide that input. And I think the council has a, has a duty to open up for as much input from the, the city residents as possible. And that's what has the big increase in public participation, and I'd like to see that continue. I think if there's concern about comments being made, we can reinforce that we do have the do-the-right-thing principle that we'd like to practice, and you could comment if, if you feel necessary, just asking people to show respect so that the comments are limited to the subject matter that's being discussed. But I would certainly see, hate to see the element where they're actually able to participate and provide that public comment live deleted because of your concern about potential comments that could be limited, I think, with your verbal reminder to do the right thing and show respect. So, thank you.
Thank you. I believe Ms. D'Souza had a comment. Do we have other speaker cards? Perfect.
First of all, I want to ask, do you guys use this, Robert's Rules of Order? Is this meeting conducted according to this?
It is within our council guidelines, yes.
I didn't know the answer, that's why I was truly asking you. Okay, so I watched the Zoom meeting two weeks ago, and it was really disturbing to me. I agree that we should be able to have comments, but I want to read you a couple of sentences out of this Robert's Rules of Order, and what I'm going to ask you tonight is to consider this as a way to get the meetings. To me, it was so sad, it broke my heart to see people from our community that would stand up here and basically call people names, to treat people terrible that are in this council, and I don't think it should be allowed, so I see at the times, I got to talk real fast. Basically, under chapter 15, it's discipline, it says, "Every organization has the right to enforce its rules and expect ethical and honorable conduct from its members." Then I'm going to skip stuff. "If the problem is not corrected, when it arises, it can be escalated to something more serious." Then it has what to do with these unruly, and they call them obnoxious behavior. Number one is the, Mr. Mayor can give them a warning. Number two is deciding penalties if they do it a second time, and one of those penalties that we could choose, or you could choose, would be censor. So I'm asking that you all, well, actually, I would like you to vote on this. I don't know how to read their clock, keeps changing. Am I out of time?
That is your, that is your time left remaining.
Oh, okay. So anyway, I'd like you, I'm asking you if you would vote to do this, meaning I'm asking you, number one, is the next time somebody stands up here, or it can be in public, in social media, if anybody in, within the council or the assembly wants to call other people, you know, bad names, or talk to people, to use this podium, to just stand up here and to tell you guys how to do your job, that's totally unacceptable to me. Okay, no one in the, in the assembly has that right to do that. They can give them an opinion, but not, just like you and I can't talk mean to each other in social media. So that's what I'm asking you, please, put an end to this, and this will also move the meetings on quicker. So, meaning that anybody, number one, if they stand up to use this podium or Zoom for the mere purpose of calling you mean names, then they get, that's the warning, right then in real time. If they do it a second time, then we go to the penalty stage, and we, I would choose to censor, which censoring is really just embarrassing them, really, and telling them that this is serious and you're taking it serious. So anyway, that's, I'm just asking you to please, I'd like to see you vote on this tonight, or just agree to start doing it and get control of these meetings so that we can just do business. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other speaker cards?
Mayor Wan, I have no other speaker cards, and I do not have any hands raised on Zoom on this item.
All right, then I will close public. You can fill out a speaker card.
Thank you, Mayor, although it's not required. So you and I are free speech absolutists, I know that. When Zoom first started, I thought it was a fantastic idea that people could participate. I've got a fellow veteran here who wore uniform just like me to protect the Constitution and the First Amendment. I believe in it thoroughly. You've heard me say that I disagree with people who burn the flag, but they have the right to do it. When we had the sign ordinance, Councilmember Tillman, I mean, Clovin, I was the only one who was for eliminating that thing. In this case, you guys have a difficult situation. There's this whole thing about hate speech. You just did a hate speech podcast, Councilmember Tillman, very interesting. Who is the arbiter of hate speech? Is it you? Is it you? Is it you? What is hate speech? Is it something you disagree with? I'll tell you why this thing probably came up, let's face it. At the last meeting, one of my former colleagues, a member of a certain nonprofit that's really upset over the fact that they have to pay for things now, called in with all kinds of profanity, directed at Councilmember Trupiano. At a meeting not too long ago, one of my other former colleagues called her name, said she didn't have a spine, and I called you out, Councilmember Clovin, because you're a Mr. Do-the-right-thing church elder, great guy. I've never seen you ever say anything to your supporters who behave this way, ever. You guys have to make a decision tonight. I'm all for this, but if we're going to have people call in and use profanity, some of you encourage children to watch these things. you encourage children to watch these things. The words that were used at the last meeting, there's no way I would have wanted my five-year-old daughter to watch that. It's unacceptable. But hey, the nonprofits pissed off, so they get to say and do whatever they want. You guys need to put some order to that. Mayor Juan, you have a difficult decision. I know that you are 100% a free speech absolutist, as I am. But in this case, if we're not going to play correctly in the sandbox, then we take away the sandbox. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, with that.
Mayor Juan, I do have a hand raised on Zoom.
Uh, sorry, say again?
I do have a hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
CW, I'll momentarily allow you to speak. Please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, council, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen. Um, I, you know, I, as a member of the council, uh, years ago, uh, during, uh, one of the meetings, we had a physical altercation go on. Um, and I find that to be unacceptable. Uh, the, uh, former planning commissioner that just spoke, used the words pissed off. Well, would he have his five-year-old daughter, uh, allowed to hear pissed off? Um, the, the thing here with regard to people speaking on Zoom is, uh, a certain amount of decorum. Uh, I agree that profanity shouldn't be used. I agree that people should not, uh, chastise people on the, on the council. Um, I think it's a very difficult position that you're being put into, but as far as free speech goes, uh, this is an, an excellent opportunity to show that Clayton can have free speech and can have Zoom, uh, for those people that can't make it in, including myself tonight, um, to be able to speak. Uh, I guess my question would be, what are you afraid of? Uh, if, if there was hate speech, like they had in Walnut Creek, I could certainly understand the idea that you would want to, uh, stop using Zoom for public comment. But in Clayton, I haven't heard much hate speech, if you want to put that into quotation marks. Bottom line is that when Mayor Cloven was, uh, mayor, he would, uh, give a speech in the beginning about being civil to the, uh, various council members and not to call anybody out individually. I agree with that. Um, but Clayton is a different animal. Clayton is political. Uh, I don't believe that you've heard any anti Semit- anti, uh, anti Semitism, or anti-Asian hate speech, uh, anything like that in Clayton. I think people are very concerned about what's going on in Clayton and, uh, should have the right to get on Zoom, make their point. And I also agree with, uh, with the speaker who said, if this goes on, uh, to, to be too many times, that people do get censored, that, if that's what needs to be done. But anyway, bottom line is, I don't think we have anything to be afraid of in Clayton so far, uh, with what I've heard. Anything that happens on Zoom can certainly happen in the chamber. It certainly had happened when I was on the council. And, uh, I would encourage the council to consider keeping the Zoom, uh, comments. So thank you very much for letting me speak as private citizen today.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion.
Uh, Mayor, a hand just went up on Zoom on this item.
Sure, let's indulge.
Roy, I will momentarily, momentarily allow you to speak. Please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to address the council.
Yeah, can you, uh, hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I caught the, the meeting late, uh, and, uh, just heard the last few comments by, uh, the city manager about a censor too before it terminated. And, uh, yeah, regarding this, this issue about, and I'm just, I'm a bit, that there's a vote going to be to terminate Zoom, uh, and, and then if it's terminating Zoom, then terminate the council meeting altogether. Because we see most of this misbehavior, this unacceptable behavior, for calling out a, from calling out some council member by name and making malicious comments or accusations, you know, during the council meeting. It's unacceptable. And that's in the council meeting. So if you were to just, you know, back up, do some math, look at the, you know, the, the per- the amount that's done on Zoom versus any of the council sessions themselves, then cancel the council meeting using that logic. So, that's point number one. Uh, and, and, you know, and we see this growing, this kind of behavior, you know, nationwide, you know, it's a phenomenon, societal phenomenon, it's occurring nationwide. And, but, we can do better. And I think the last gentleman that spoke was talking about kind of like to make, like, oh, well, we can let some of this stuff go. You know, it's very simple, set up, you know, put together some guidelines, you know? There's more certain terms than guidelines. And if a person did not adhere to guidelines, then that person can be just banned. You know, absolutely, just banned. You cannot participate. You know, using personal incentives and, you know, on, on people. Um, and, uh, and if people don't want to play ball, then, or it has enforcement, and if they don't want to comply with enforcement, then ban them, period, for non-compliant, two rules, single rule, you know, to subvention. So, I mean, that's, so, that's my, that's what I think, in my mind, and most people think. So to take out Zoom seriously, that, every week, every two weeks, we see the same people, and whoever they are, saying the kind of things that they do. We need to be called back in that same session meeting, skillmate, no, with a guideline, no. You want to speak, stop, or stop now, or, you know, probably leave. And altogether, then add message, add record, add, if there's no compliance. And, and I'm also saying, that doesn't include even council members themselves, because that's going to be the total council member, uh, uh, the council, it means this side of this type of behavior in your language is unacceptable. Well, if there's some kind of, I say, no. Be quiet, be quiet, be quiet, be quiet, know what's going on, and, uh, unfortunately, I caught the meeting late, but if there's some kind of.
Thank you, Mr. Korea. Uh, your, your time has, your time has exceeded, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kendorf?
Good evening, council members. Um, my name is Lauren Kendorf, 33 El Portal Drive, and I just wanted to respond, um, in saying, uh, Councilmember Cloven's, other than nights like tonight when we have a action-packed agenda, always starts with the do the right thing, and I always hear him appreciate the students that have been nominated. And always, he adds to that, and as adults in the community, we will uphold these, these, um, these, uh, what do you say, the inclusion, the respect, the kindness and those things. So to say that close, Councilmember Cloven, um, or to bring that to question, I, I find insulting to our community because he is, you know, always doing, does the right thing and brings that up every council meeting when we do recognize our, our city values. The other thing I'd like to say is, um, this hybrid is, does give many people a chance to speak. I know, we know there's people with young children, there's people that commute, there's people that come home for jobs. If they can't get here, of course, we want to hear from everybody. I can't imagine there's anybody who doesn't want to keep this in place and respectfully hear from everybody. It's, it's a great addition that, uh, we have discovered due to a horrible pandemic, but if, we can say there's a silver lining, this is one thing that has come from that, that we give more people the opportunity to take part in our city government. And also, I'm, I'm hearing this is based on an incident of two weeks ago, which I, yes, there's things that, there's ways that things should be said, yet there also is freedom of speech and the way I would say something and the way someone else might say something is, could be very different. So while that is not my style, I want to make sure we respect, everybody has the chance to speak. Um, and if there are, mm-hmm, rules around decorum, which, oh, I don't think she's hearing more, but, um, you know, then certainly we can remind and uphold those. But I don't think we should take away the hybrid because all of a sudden, somebody doesn't like something that someone said, that's fairly short-sighted, and I think there's other things we can do to allow people to speak and, um, and, you know, call for doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will close public comment. Uh, back for discussion. Anyone like to kick us off?
Coming out of, uh, COVID, uh, during Mayor Wolf's period, um, we were all pretty well cooped up in our homes and there's a lot of angst. And during that term, there was a lot of boisterous, um, raucous public comment on Zoom as we were getting familiar with it. And it was distasteful, uh, to many of us who were sitting on the council that time. During my term as mayor, I made it a point, every meeting before public comment, to remind, um, citizens that when they speak, to speak to us all as a whole body, not as individual council members, and to not call us out individually. I did that, um, for your sake, Councilmember Juan and Councilmember Diaz, Vice Mayor and and Mayor, as well as for my sake, um, because I know how much effort it takes for us to do our jobs. And I was conscious of the venom that was out there in the community and tried to quell it, to bring it to, we are one body, doing the best we can as, as we know. And quite frankly, it worked. I got chided for being preachy, but if living our values as a city is preachy, I'm guilty. And if asking our citizens to uphold those as they come to the microphone to tell what they have to say is preachy, I'm guilty. But we didn't have that happen the whole year, not one incident while I was letting, reminding people before they went to the mic. And I think that's not a bad thing to do, is to remind people that's the case. I don't think we need to remove the ability to speak, but we just remind them before they speak that who we stand for is a city. That's kind of my thoughts.
I'll, I'll go ahead and go. Um, I'm glad that you mentioned it because I was actually going to do the same thing. Because I do feel that people sometimes do need a reminder, um, especially when we get repeat, um, participants who want to speak during public comment. And, and I know that I've been guilty of it too, sometimes when, when a speaker's name is announced and, and you kind of, I kind of brace myself to wonder what they're going to say. But I know that all of us were elected and, and we all know that we have to have thick skin. Um, I think anybody who's running for an elected position has to understand that, and you kind of just have to roll with the punches and, and take them as they come. Um, that said, I do agree with all of the speakers, um, in that we do have to have a level of decorum here in our chambers, which I think, um, all of us, all of us sitting here would agree to. And I loved, um, the comments about reminding people or giving them a verbal warning. I think that's a great idea. Profanity, I also agree with, um, Mrs. Kendorf, that, um, you know, the way that I say something versus how somebody else would say something might not be the same, but that we have to respect that. And to, uh, Mr. Gavidia's question about what is hate speech, uh, I think it's clear that people who are, um, spouting antisemitism, which is what my podcast and the, the panel that I sat on in September were about, um, or racist comments, for example, anyone calling in and saying the N-word, et cetera, or saying anything else about any other, uh, person of color, or anyone in town, or on this dais, if you're at the podium, I think you need to speak respectfully and keep that out. Luckily, none of that has happened with people getting Zoom bombed like they have in other cities. I know that, um, several other cities, and I know that that was mentioned originally, um, in this agenda item, that we wanted to, one, make sure that we address what was said a couple of weeks ago and that people are calling in and not saying proper comments, but also being mindful of what's happened in other cities. For example, Walnut Creek has been, for months, um, repeatedly having boom, uh, Zoom bombers calling in and, and spouting a lot of hatred com- uh, hatred. Um, El Cerrito as well. Uh, the two weeks ago Pleasant Hill had it. Concord has not had it, um, but they chose to shut down public comments on Zoom. So I polled all of the, um, surrounding areas to find out what they were doing about true hate speech, um, and how they were handling it. I'm not sure if anybody else did the same exercise, but I'll just share it with everyone here. Arinda's voting on that tonight. They have not had any Zoom bombers that were, um, spouting hatred, but given what was happening in other cities, they wanted to discuss that on their dais. I know in the council members that I spoke to, it didn't sit right with them to just, um, I don't want to call it prematurely, but for lack of a better word, prematurely council, cancel Zoom, uh, public comments when they hadn't actually been affected by, um, hate speech callers and the Zoom bombers that the others had, which is the reason for shutting it down. All of the cities that I spoke to did agree that, um, coming out of the pandemic and allowing more access, the public to have more access to their meetings was why they did it. Um, they saw an increase with public participation, which was key to them. They do have parents who are commuting home from work, cooking dinner, trying to get their kids in the bed, et cetera, and they might not otherwise be able to participate. So for that council member, she said, it just didn't sit well, can- canceling it. Others I talked to said the same. Um, Lafayette will be voting next week. And they did get Zoom bombed, uh, in October, and their city attorney immediately cut the person off if, if it was not on topic. Um, for Walnut Creek, I know that they tried a variety of ways. As I said, they had been being attacked for months. And they tried limiting the number of public comments, so the time limit was shortened. They also, um, they gave 30 minutes or time limit for how long public comments could last, um, as a way to crowd them out. And then they've even tried to just move them to the end of the meeting as well. That seems to have calmed them down, but then they finally decided they were going to have to just cancel them because it was becoming too much. Um, as I mentioned, Concord already ended the public comments on Zoom. Pittsburgh never went to hybrid. Um, they had email only, so after the pandemic, they never went to Zoom. The same, um, Oakley is the same thing, they never went to hybrid. They have email only. For Pleasant Hill, they voted to have comments in person only, and they just did this after they were Zoom bombed a couple of weeks ago. Brentwood, they now have Zoom comments for agenda items only, not on, uh, not, not agendized comments or non-agenda items. Um, and the clerk will shut them down if they veer off topic. Um, for them, accessibility was important, since they have a, an elderly community, they wanted to be sure that people still had access. And then El Cerrito, um, ended Zoom, Zoom comments. And I gave you all of that just to give a flavor of, a lot of this was either they never had Zoom, but for the ones who did, the only ones who canceled it based off of actually being Zoom bombed were, um, El Cerrito, um, Brentwood limited, limited them, Concord, net, they're not in that, Walnut Creek, and Pleasant Hill. Um, Antioch never, they actually have canceled Zoom and it had nothing to do with the Zoom bomber. So, as much as I would hate for that to have to be an excuse for us to cancel them, we have not experienced it yet. And so in my opinion, I think that we should keep them, and I think that we should actually definitely go back to asking for there to be decorum here in, in the room and at the podium, and using the gavel and making them stop. Because I agree, cussing someone out when they're standing out there, standing up at the podium. the podium is unacceptable. And free speech can only go so far, but I think giving them a verbal warning, again, I think that's happened numerous years ago when, not a council member, but two council members sitting here at this dais were cussed out by a gentleman. In fact, the mayor at the time was sitting, her son was sitting in the room when she was called a cuss word. So I do think that we need to be very clear in that it will not be tolerated here if people are going to get out of line, and I'm curious to hear what everybody else's thoughts
I want to first thank all of the commentators that did make very good points, both here present in the Hoyer Hall and those on Zoom. Back when the COVID issue hit, Zoom presented a very viable alternative to allowing people to participate in the governmental process, and that continued for several months. What Councilmember Tillman just outlined were all of the cities in Contra Costa County. In fact, I have a article from the, an article from the East Bay Times from October 23rd, which I'm happy to share with everybody, how the canceling of the Zoom is spreading throughout the Bay Area. And she outlined a few of the cities here in our, in our community. And just to recap, Walnut Creek, Pleasant Hill, Brentwood, Concord last two weeks ago, Morgan Hill is outlined here as well as in the paper, and others, El Cerrito. It almost appears as though that this is a planned effort, because they're not always people from the local community that are getting on the Zoom at each of these municipalities and counties and providing hate speech, and it's absolutely atrocious. I know of another colleague that on a private Zoom situation, some very distasteful videos were put on during their meeting. The system can be hacked, and unfortunately, will Clayton be next? As every one of these cities, Walnut Creek, Pleasant Hill, Concord, El Cerrito, Brentwood, and so on and so forth, even, even, cut these up, they're going to find out which ones still have a functional Zoom situation, and they're going to open up on us. I just, I think that's, it's planned, and I'm sure that could, could happen here. By the way, in talking with the city manager earlier today, what we will still be able to provide is video access and audio access to the people in the community to hear what's going on in the meetings. The one thing that will not be allowed, if this proposal goes through, is to cut off the ability to provide comments. And what my concern is, and I know that there are, every month or so, we have the Do the Right Thing, children come in here from the various, from the elementary to middle to the high school and be subject to this kind of talk. We don't need that. And I, unfortunately, there's no alternative in my view at this point, other than we need to finish using Zoom and thank it very much for its usefulness during the COVID situation. Thank you.
Well, I, what I want to say about this is, you know, this, I'm, I'm not speaking just personally because our last meeting was very upsetting to me, and I'm not looking to curtail public comment whatsoever. I think what I would like to see is not only, and Debbie De Souza, thank you for sharing the Roberts rules and reminding us about decorum. I'd like to see us supporting one another on this dais, not in private, but in public. And whether that's our mayor taking charge of people commenting, I know that night I kind of looked to see, is this allowed? Is like, somebody allowed to use profanity? I'm all about having a thick skin and people having an open forum, and I'm not looking to curtail that. I honestly am not. If we can maintain some level of decorum and respect and also step in and support one another up here to say, hey, that's not right, then I'm willing to keep it going until maybe we have an even more serious situation. But, you know, one of those other things out there, I know we talked about racism, but I also feel like some of these comments are very sexist as well, and so I'm going to say there might be some misogyny out there, and I'm willing to hang in there. But I think we have to put some Roberts rules around this and stop it in action when it gets out of hand, for all of our sake.
All right. I would just say, there's definitely been, and you and I have talked, there's definitely been a flavor of misogyny that's laced a lot of the criticism, especially towards you, which is, which is very unfortunate. I firmly believe that more participation is good. We visited this issue back in February, and at that time, we all decided that it was worthwhile to continue. I think the fact pattern since then has changed. And while, one of the things that, you know, I did very early was to move the order of public comment so that came first. The reason why we did that, or why I wanted to do that, was to give people a clear expectation of when they can actually participate, so they don't have to wait between one, two, three, or whatever. No, actually, it wasn't that long. But they could predict when they would have the opportunity to offer a comment on non-agenda items. This is really a way to try and increase public participation. So I think, you know, there's been multiple comments about advising people and encouraging them to have a certain level of decorum, which I guess is, I think that's a great goal, but ultimately, it is unenforceable. It is, we do not have the ability by law to ever tell people or direct people. We can tell them whatever, we could tell them whatever we want, but we have no way to enforce what rules against what people say. They can curse at us, there's no way to stop it. They can literally just scream at us, they can sing a song, or they can read from the phone book. None of this we are able to really do on non-agenda items. On agenda items, we probably have a little more latitude, but typically, we cannot limit what people say based on the content of what they are saying. And I am, as Mr. Gavidia mentioned earlier, I am a free speech absolutist. I think people should have the right to say whatever they want, and we can judge them for it. But allowing public comment from Zoom is not a requirement. It is, it is at our discretion as a council. And given what has been taking place in our local communities, as well as in our own community with members of the public using it as a tool for hostility and essentially cursing at us and whatnot, I think it's run its course. And while I, I heard our city staff in that preserving the ability for people that we invite, or other, as it's described in the staff report, I don't have the exact words, I think that's a good idea. So I would, I would say we do that. But on keeping comment where we allow, you know, all manner to just come and abuse this thing, I do not think that is worthwhile going forward. And on balance, that is not something that I would support. I would encourage folks that if they want to participate, they can always come in, and all of us are available via every method of communication, and you can also email in comments at your ledger. So to that, I think, you know, we are trying to balance, or I am trying to balance, you know, that free speech and the ability to interact with us with the discretionary item that on balance is, you know, now a net negative. So that is where I would land on that one.
I still feel that people should be able to speak freely and participate, because I think it was, we need to meet people where they are, is something that you used to say when I was first elected. And I think that there are people who are in their homes, who are immunocompromised, cannot participate, et cetera, and who might want to participate and they cannot make it down here to chambers, sure, they can send it in, just as if they can send in any written public comment. But I think quieting their voice or not allowing them to actually vocalize it, since you can't tell tone in an email or in a letter. I understand that you're hesitant to ask them to be respectful. I think that that's just a courtesy thing that you can remind people of, just as Peter used to do. But I also think that if your concern is that people, you know, might continue to do whatever it is that you feel is bothering you aside from two weeks ago, we can move public comment back to where it was. I think it used to be before we gave out our, actually, I think it was always there. Maybe we moved our report outs to the end of the agenda. But there are options for not getting rid of Zoom public comments. I think that that is a mistake if that's what this council chooses to do.
And Mala, I was going to ask you, were you going to weigh in on something?
I would, I would like to just clarify some comments that have been made by both the public and the council. I think this was put on the agenda mainly to deal with the hate speech that the communities around us have experienced, and we are limited in stopping that speech if it is on topic to the agenda item. And then, as the mayor indicated, if it's during public comment on a non-agenda item, we can be limited as well because that's a broader discussion point. But we are allowed to limit comment on non-agendized items to matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. So I might argue a little differently that if someone rang the, or saying the telephone book, that unless it was the Clayton telephone book, it may not be within our subject matter jurisdiction. But the point is, is we are limited, and once that speech is made, it's still, it is still challenging to hear, especially if there is a large audience, if there are children in the room, as the vice mayor said. I did experience that at the city of Lafayette with a large group of people in the room, and it was disturbing. But the comments that I have heard from members of the, of the public that are residents of Clayton are not comments that we would censure or that we would stop. So that, that is something I do want to clarify. The Brown Act does allow for criticism of the council and the policies. Obviously, comments about respect and courtesy can be made by council members, but we wouldn't gavel or we wouldn't stop those comments. So I just want to be clear about that going forward. If you were to stop Zoom and someone were to make those comments at the dais, we would hear them out in their entirety.
Including the use of profanity?
Including the use of profanity, if it's, if it is again related to the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or the agenda item. I mean, we can encourage civil discourse, but I think as the mayor said, we wouldn't be able to stop it.
Thank you.
So I would move that we eliminate public comment from Zoom or remote public comment with the exception of the things that were outlined in the staff report for folks that are invited.
Second.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to keep the Zoom public comments.
Sure, we can do a vote on the substitute motion. If there is a second.
I second it, please.
Councilmember Chlobin?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Trippiano?
Aye.
Wait, you're voting in favor of the substitute? Okay.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
No.
Mayor Juan?
I vote no. And I guess the substitute motion passes then, three to two. Okay, well, then, item 10C. This is approval of city sponsors' special events. Mr. City Manager.
Okay, now I'm on. Thank you, Mayor. You know, we've talked about this item, it's coming back for consideration. We originally talked about it on 9/19. Subcommittee rewrote portions of the policy, it came back in 10/17, and we are now, at the mayor's request, bringing back the policy, that same policy on 10/17 with no edits at this time for council's reconsideration. So I'm going to really turn it over to council because it's really, I think, your discussion tonight on what you'd like to do with this policy moving forward.
All right. Then, since we did discuss this at our last meeting, I will move straight to public comment on this item. If anyone has any public comment, now is the time.
Mayor Juan, I do have one speaker card for Keith.
Good evening again, Mayor, council. We'd certainly discussed this at length at our last meeting, and I did expect it would result in a revised policy being brought back from staff, so I was surprised to see it on tonight's agenda again. But it looks as though it's been revived in its proposed language that was discussed at the last meeting. So I would just like to, once again, recommend that the council listen to the advice from staff, and Kim, I want to particularly thank you at the last meeting. You did indicate initially that you were in favor of the subcommittee approach, but you got quite a bit of input from both the public and from staff. And if the initial intent for what was being proposed with the use of subcommittees, if the initial intent was your expectation it was going to reduce the workload for the staff, I think that was put to rest when the staff actually said it would result in more work, not less work. And because the staff is under such pressure right now with their workload, and they're getting additional pressure with other issues coming up, I would ask you once again to respect the opinion of the group that would be responsible, the city staff and city manager, that would be responsible for carrying out what's being proposed, and to listen to them and their experience and their assessment of the impact that would have on their workload, and that it really wasn't going to achieve, it wasn't taking away any control from the city council. That was also one of the items that was discussed, and ultimately, it was just putting another step in the process. But most of those issues would still come back to the city council, so you're not giving up control, you're just maintaining the existing process that's being used that would be easier and more efficient for the city council to follow through with that recommendation that was coming from staff. So I think that's the key advice that you were receiving, and that was the actual work group, and the city manager has experience doing that type of thing, so I would rely on his expertise and his opinion, and ask that you respect that. Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards on this item.
Okay, then I will close public comment, given that we had discussed this item prior.
And just to clarify too, there are no hands raised on Zoom. I wanted to say that as well.
Thank you. Is there anything further that anyone would like to add to this discussion? This is a continuation from what we had tabled in the past.
Yeah, I was, so, just to be clear, what we had tabled and had actually, so I guess I'm a little confused on why it came back in the form that it is, other than for us to keep talking about it. I know at the last meeting, we talked about changing the language in here so that the city manager would take care of the RFP, and there were some other, other guidance that we had given him. So are we going to sit here and do this now and wordsmith it? What was the intent of this tonight?
It's exactly as it's written.
No, so you brought it back even though it was tabled, and when we tabled it, we had talked about changing the language and advising the city manager that he needed to move forward with the RFP, et cetera. But that's still in here as if the, the committee would be handling that, and so I'm a little confused on what we're doing.
I could refer to the agenda.
Well, and I do think we need to have a discussion about the committee again, because the committee would really be the driving force behind... because the committee would really be the driving force behind working with the city staff. And I'm just going to say that we are going to have our next Concert in the Grove Committee meeting next week. And I am very encouraged by how successful the concerts in the Grove have been. And that is because of the hard work that the committee has done, not the city staff. Staff has certainly been supportive in our efforts. But we have done a terrific job between the procedural manual, raising money, all of the marketing, advertising. And so I really do feel like there is an opportunity here to have, to take our Concert in the Grove Committee meeting and really transition it into a city-sponsored special event committee meeting. And with all due respect, we have been working on this all year. I hope folks will join us on November 14th at 4:00 PM on the first floor of City Hall, just to see what we've accomplished. That work could not have been done without several volunteers, not just on the council, but volunteers from the community, who we will thank at that meeting. And so I think the, this committee needs to be the, the driving force that will work with the staff. And again, I said this at the last meeting. I'd like to see this city-sponsored special events committee be council people, staff, and people from the community. We certainly would appreciate that help, but that's where I'm standing on this item tonight. I like the policy because I helped write it. And I would like to see the committee be the driving force that works with the staff.
Okay, with that, then.
I really appreciate your efforts. Councilmember Trippiano, I, I know you worked way more than you anticipated in the concerts in the park. I just, I just want to first tip my hat and acknowledge your efforts. And I just much I want to acknowledge Councilmember Diaz, or Vice Mayor Diaz's efforts for the many years that he worked on setup and takedown for the, for the concerts in the park. It's a Herculean effort. And the fact that you jumped in like you did and did the work that you did was, was impressive to get, to get that done. I don't think that as councilmembers, we were elected to run special events. I mean, we, we do, we volunteer because we're passionate about volunteering. I mean, we, we just, we just love Clayton. So we can't help but get involved and, and, and be involved in the different events, whether it be the Fourth of July parade, or be concerts in the parks, or, you know, whatever we do. Or Jim's passionate about his car shows, I, I get that. I mean, we, we all love volunteering and being part of it. But we're not elected to run special events. And I've heard on several occasions, your desire to get some professional help to help with the concerts in the park. And as you nod here in agreement with me, you understand that there's going to be a need to get some other entity so that we can have some succession planning behind this, in case we're not here or in case you're not here to do the car shows, but you want to continue doing them. I mean, you want your legacy to move, move on, I get that. So, I mean, the whole point of our city manager's plan was to dedicate a portion of our budget towards these special events. And then to create the ability beyond us as individuals, elected officials, to have these events run in perpetuity. And what I am missing is why this, your, your Concert in the Park Subcommittee, which would essentially be now the new Special Events Subcommittee, should run all the events. Should, should run, I mean, as it says right here, "All city-sponsored events will be overseen by the city-sponsored events, special events Subcommittee." You've already said it's hard work to do what you're doing as, as it is. So why would you want to run everything? Especially in light of the fact that we know we're going to have to go through our city manager to get an RFP out to a third party to help run the events that you're already having trouble doing in the first place because of so much effort. It just seems like we're missing something here. We're not elected to run all the special events. Okay, so I respectfully request that we listen to our city manager and his request not to create additional work for the city. It doesn't mean we cannot be involved in this, it just means let him do his job that we've hired him to do. And that's, so I, I, that's, that's my request, it makes sense.
I think the point that's missing is not, this doesn't, this policy does not indicate that the committee would run the events. It indicates that the committee would provide oversight for the events in conjunction with city staff. So I think the conflation of that is what is causing this consternation. Everything that you're, you're saying is not mutually exclusive from the how, from the way that things would be run. So I, I'm fully on board with the policy as written.
So I would like you to find the word oversee because it's quite.
You read it just now.
I, I define "All city-sponsored events will be overseen by the city-sponsored special events committee." So let's give, let's give an example. If the city-sponsored events, special Subcommittee, whatever, says, okay, "City Manager Preble, will you please put out an RFP?" Does that put the selection of whoever the, the empties that reply to that on the city, on, on the city manager or on the Subcommittee?
I don't understand your question.
It, 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 does it, does, does that mean all vendors, all any other entity that we would pay, it has to go through the special events Subcommittee to choose who, who does different events?
No.
Like, like, for instance, the.
The answer is no.
So, so what does it mean to be overseen? I mean, we know that he's going to have an RFP.
Let me give you an example that will illustrate this.
Oversight is just that, oversight.
We as a, as a body.
And there is expertise that the committee, the current committee for the concerts has in order to make the concerts happen again next year. And we have the expertise and the ability to pull in those people that can actually deliver the product. And right now, it's a very limited scope product that we're talking about. And it can be done and oversight and overseen by the committee. Part of the problem we had in the past was after the representatives from the city council left the city council and ran the project, communication was disrupted. And there was no way to continue to track it and make sure we were still on target. We didn't even know how much money was in, was in the bank until we actually went in there and started digging through all the paperwork. So the, this committee has that ability to do that. And we could draw upon people that can help us execute and move forward. I, I think you're making a bigger issue than really there is.
And really, with all due respect, we have leaned on the city staff very, very little. And I know, Brett, you have not been part of those Concert in the Grove Committee meetings. We've had two already. It, it's very, very minimal staff time. And we know the staff is burdened, overworked. And so we're trying to minimize that, that's my point.
So why would the, I mean, again, I, I'm giving you kudos for your, your effort on, on the concerts in the park. Don't get me wrong, I, I appreciate your efforts and then, and that's, that's true and sincere. But why would you then want to take on the Fourth of July parade and the car shows and then the 60th anniversary with, as, as events? We're talking about, the original proposal was having an outside events committee help, help us with some of this. Is that, is that not part of this anymore? And why, we still have to go through the city manager to get that RFP and to have that, that happen through, through typical procedure, procurement processes, correct?
The committee, my feeling is the committee would determine which event will need an event coordinator or a promoter to hire music or whatever the needs of the event will be.
And then that information, that information goes where?
We're not soliciting that. What we're trying to do is find a venue and a format that can execute those events that are quote, "city special events." That's all.
I'm sorry, can you please repeat that? I didn't understand what you, what you meant just now.
All we're trying to do is oversee events and make sure there's communication back to the city council and ultimately to the people that elected us to, to do the job we did, or do. And that's fiscal responsibility, that's what we're trying to do, as well as getting the right people for operations to make it happen. We can do that, and it can be done simply with very minimal staff involvement.
That's what, Councilmember Cloven, I think, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the answer that you're, we're trying to get is if you decide that a promoter needs to be hired for an event, are you then going to go to the city manager and say, please hire a promoter? That's what we're trying to understand, Vice Mayor.
The purpose of the policy?
I was asking the Vice Mayor.
I heard you.
Okay, so then I would like him to answer.
I, I will answer.
I would like for him to answer because I was asking him, please.
Your request is noted. Because.
No, actually, I appreciate you noting it.
Thank you for your input.
But I don't.
This committee has been functioning for over the entire year that the concerts were going, and it was, it moved swiftly, effectively, and efficiently. Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, sir. I'm trying to understand, are you saying then?
Can we get back to the?
I'm trying to understand. So if you want me to vote on it, I get to ask questions. So I get that you guys want to push it through, but I'm going to need you to hold the beat until I finish my questions. I would like to understand, if you decide that a promoter needs to be hired, does this new, I'm going to pretend that it's you two. Let's say that it's the people who were doing the concerts in the Grove, and it's now you two continue to move on to this group. Are you then going to be tasked, you two, councilmembers, going to be tasked with hiring a promoter? Or are we asking then the city to hire or to put out an RFP?
The policy states that the committee will make a determination on how that proceeds with the assistance and working with city staff, period.
So what does that mean in context of my question? Last time you said that I get it wrong, so I want you to, I actually want you to be explicit. It doesn't.
That answers your question.
It doesn't, actually, sir.
The committee will determine it, kind of case by case.
The committee makes a determination what is necessary.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Trippiano, say that again.
The committee will determine the needs of each special event, city-sponsored special event. That's how I see it.
And so in.
Will there need to be an RFP for a special event? Not, probably not for every event. Will there need to be a promoter, not for every event? And the committee will determine that, and it doesn't mean the committee.
I understand, okay, so when that hypothetical, when that happens, do you, you're, you're rolling your eyes and I don't understand why you're getting exasperated.
Because this is not about the policy, right? We haven't gotten into the, the, the committee doesn't even exist yet, right?
But you want to use the Concerts in the Grove Committee as an example. And so in what you guys are going to talk about next week, I'm trying to understand in that context. If we use that as the shining star in the example, do you envision, pick an event out of the four that we've agreed? I'm trying to understand at what point, since last meeting, we asked this gentleman to go out and go get an RFP?
It could be an RFP, it could be selection of a, of a, a promoter or whatever. That's to be determined by event. Can't answer that right now. It's going to be determined by each event. And the committee will oversee that. I guess your question is trying to derail, you know, what we're trying to do here.
I'm happy to vote for it, I'm trying to understand what I'm voting for. I, I, I don't like to sit up here and vote for things I don't understand. And so since we all get a vote, why are you guys having a problem with me understanding what I'm voting on? It is not clear to me what you guys are trying to push through.
Can you identify what part of the policy you find unclear?
Last, last meeting, we had a long discussion about this. And at the end, we actually tasked the city manager.
Can you identify what part of the policy you find unclear?
No, because you didn't want to, you didn't want to parse that, you, you just said.
Well, I'm asking you right now.
Yes, let's go back to, it is page 2 of 5 in the Redline version. I'll start there. I said that we should add this back so future councils understand the rationale for why this policy even exists. It talks about all of volunteerism, how councilmembers interact, et cetera. I understand that you would like it to be a, a short and stark document. But I really do think that if we're going to go down that road and you guys want to actually keep this, people need to understand why we did what we did today. So that's my first ask, that's right underneath, I'm getting there, that's right underneath the background.
I asked you.
I'm getting there.
To find what part of the policy you don't understand, not.
Misogyny, I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
Can you actually get there then?
Misogyny, yes.
Wait, can you clarify?
Because I don't see you getting short with anybody, any of these gentlemen on this dais, so I'm going to call it out now. All right, so on 3 of 5, since you're rushing me, it reads process, it says, "Process for confirming, adding, deleting sponsored special events," is how it was worded originally in the Redline version. I would like, I have stet on my page, that entire thing which reads that the city manager now has, it's under his purview. The city manager's office is going to bring forth the agenda item to the city council, et cetera. All of that, and include in there that he's actually going to run the RFP process if we need one. We talked about it last meeting, and I don't understand why we are not putting that in this document.
Is that your question?
That's one of them, yes.
Because that was a policy decision made by the Subcommittee. Next question.
I like it when you show your true colors, it's actually really good, especially when it's on video. The next one, we talked about the confusion on whether or not the city-sponsored special events committee needed to, to be included at all. And I want to be clear, just as I have every other time. I, as a councilmember, do not want any part of trying to create these events. And so to the extent that I guess it's probably going to be the three of you guys that are running them, I think that that should be noted in here because I don't think that we should encumber future councilmembers who actually run and get elected to having to sit on this committee, which is why we were saying to get rid of it in the first place last meeting. And the city manager said he can handle it himself. And so to that extent, I think it should be documented in here, who or which councilmembers will be involved. I do not want any part of having to run these events. If I want to volunteer for them, that's on me, but I do not want to have anything at all to do with actually putting them on. And I would like that to be documented in here, and I don't think any future councilmember should have to do that. And you could put that wherever you want.
Is that a question?
It's not a question, I'm asking, it's an ask for you to put it in there, it's actually a tell. I am not doing it, so please put it in the minutes. Holly Tillman is not going to be running any of these events, I don't want to do it.
I think that that's kind of the, the impression that I'm getting from this policy is that you are requiring the Subcommittee to run these events. And, and delicately say, we're not elected to run the events, we're elected to be part of them and to volunteer as we desire as it was because we're passionate about Clayton, but not to run them. And our city manager said he can handle this. And I am, I agree, and I am allowing that he be empowered to do that. And this does, putting his oversight into a Subcommittee's hand takes that power away from his position and what he, he's, he's asked to do, so I disagree with you.
I would repeat again that it's not running events, it's oversight. Just as we have oversight over essentially 100% of city activities through our city council slash city manager relationship, it provides, it is the same type of oversight that we're talking about. So the fact that you are referring to as running an event, but that's not what the policy says. The policy says oversight, it, it doesn't say oversight, I think it says oversees is because of the tense. But it is oversight in the same way that all oversight is done. It does not necessarily mean that the committee is the one that is performing the operations on a day-to-day basis. So I think that's, that's the main point of confusion that you're, you have right now, or that is coming across to me.
Now, actually, when I, when I, when I look at running the.
Yeah, you keep saying running.
No, I, I.
So if you avoid the word running, it'll be better.
When I look at the oversight necessary for the Fourth of July parade, because I'm, I got a little knowledge about putting on parades recently, there's a lot of effort associated with that. And if you're going to put the Subcommittee in charge of the oversight and choosing who does which things, that's running.
That's not exact, that's not what it means, though. So you, you keep, you are, you're equivocating on what it means.
Let's go to the Fourth of July parade.
I respectfully disagree with you, you're inserting running versus oversight, and that's not the case at all.
So, in, in the oversight capacity, what of the Fourth of So in the oversight capacity, what of the Fourth of July parade, just choose some events, what would the subcommittee be doing?
I don't think that is productive to go into that level of detail because the committee is not formed.
Actually, I think that, I'm-
And also, why would we ask the city staff, who already has plenty of work to do, to do even more? We're trying to take the burden off of the city staff, and with all due respect, Brett, maybe you have run lots of events, maybe you and your staff have, but I'm not, I'm not certain of that. And so we're saying the committee would have the oversight to determine event by event what the needs of that event are. I don't know why that is so difficult to understand, to take the burden off of the city staff.
So I think we've said what we need to say. So I would make a motion that we move forward with the policy as it's indicated in the agenda item that was revised, that it was presented both prior meeting and today.
I second that motion.
Dana, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cloven?
No.
Councilmember Tillman?
Absolutely not, and I still want it stated on the record, I want nothing to do with planning any of these events. Oversight comes from the entire city council. It doesn't need a subcommittee.
Councilmember Tripiano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. That 10C is done. Next is item 11, council items limited to requests for future meetings. Are there any requests for future meetings?
Yep, I will reiterate my ask for us to bring back a conversation to have with the city attorney on investigating hostile work environments, toxic work environments, and councilmember actions that need to be investigated. Thank you.
Okay. Next is council reports. Councilmember Cloven?
Keep it pretty simple. Had a couple dozen conversations about our city finances that prompted a post. I think we've known about some of our financial challenges, but I've been really, some of the things that have happened relative to some reports this year, it's been very clear that the vast majority of Clayton doesn't know the challenges that we have. We learned that from the survey that was happened, that happened a couple years ago. And I am not going to stop talking about that challenge, and I will continue to try to illuminate those challenges because we can't make any decisions without our whole citizens knowing about these challenges. And the more we don't shed light on this, the less we're gonna be able to get help from the, our citizens to help us out at this. So I'm just leaving it at that and go, end of my report.
Councilmember Tillman?
I attended several meetings. I attended the East Bay Division Meeting of the League of California Cities. I also attended an event in the city of Piedmont, which was put on by their high school students, and it was called Piedmont Redlining and Racism. And they outlined the history of their city, which is in relation to all Bay Area cities that everybody can learn from. As soon as I can get the video link, I will post that because I think a lot of the actions that we have taken since we've been incorporated here actually dovetail precisely with what's going on in the Bay Area and what those students put together in Piedmont. I've had several Clayton Pride Board Meeting calls, as well as all, all calls. I also attended on the 25th, the new grand opening of Roadside 22, which is a new wine and beer establishment that's in the Clayton Station. I would encourage all of you guys to visit it. The new owner's name is Nicole Simpson. She was a delight. I got to meet her that evening. And she's doing a lot of great things here in the community to bring people together. She's also putting together some events, nightly events, so check out her website. She's trying to bring more business to Freewill Pizza. That's also in the alley behind the Safeway Shopping Center. So they actually partner together, and you can order pizza from Freewill into the establishment there. I also participated in the trunk retreat on Saturday, October 28th. That was a lot of fun. Some of you guys were in there, set up with your trunks as well. Lots of smiling faces and great family fun, and I want to thank the Clayton Community Church and the Clayton Business and Community Association for cosponsoring that. I attended the mayor's conference on the 2nd, and then on last evening, I had a Mount Diablo Education Foundation Board Meeting. And that is, just to let everybody know, if you have a high school student that is in our district, the Mount Diablo Unified School District, and they are in 10th, 11th, or 12th grade, they can apply to be on our Student Engagement Committee, which is being tasked with, they're foundation student advisors, and they speak to all of the students and get support for our STEAM programs, which are science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So if anybody that's listening has a student that's between 10th and 12th grade that's in our district high schools, please encourage them to apply. And if you want more details, you can get that on the website, which is mdedf.org. And then my last update is that we are going to have a Firewise Town Hall here in these, this chambers on Monday, November 13th at 6:30 PM. And that is for the community to come out and find out how you can help keep your own home and our community safe from wildfire. And I will be leading that discussion. That's the end of my report.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Thank you. On the 19th of October, attended the County Connection Board Meeting, and we're very pleased to say that ridership is returning back to pre-COVID days, which is a very, very useful use of public transportation. On the 20th, the Subcommittee Charged with Negotiation with the CBCA met, and we had a very positive beginning to restore that negotiation process. I attended on the 26th, the CBCA General Membership Meeting. Then that following Saturday, I attended the Trunk and Treat, which was a really big success. A lot of kids out there enjoying all of the goings on. Then on the 1st of November, again, a County Connection Operations and Scheduling Meeting. That's a very important committee in terms of making sure we have the correct staffing and we have the process in place to make the buses run very efficiently. On the 6th, had a, oh, excuse me, back on the 2nd, attended the mayor's conference over in Brentwood. And then on the 6th, we had our first Art and Wine Committee Meeting last, last evening. That's getting ready to go for the 27th and 8th of April of 2024. Today, I met with the Chief of Police and the city manager. One thing I'd like to add is that next Saturday, the 11th of November, 11:11 at 11:00 AM, okay, is the Veterans Day event out at the Total Sanos Park. Somehow that message didn't get through, and I was asked to send out a message, a reminder to everybody, so all veterans and non-veterans are invited to come out on Saturday, the 11th, Total Sanos Park, put on by VFW Post 1525 and Mark Steinberg, 11:11:11. Thank you.
Councilmember Tripiano?
Thank you. Just very briefly, October 19th, I attended a Capital Series Event with Assemblymember Rebecca Barakan at the Roundhouse Conference Center. It was hosted by the East Bay Leadership Council, of which I'm on the board and Executive Committee. That evening, I was at Contra Costa Association of Realtors Annual Elected Officials Reception, which was terrific, got an opportunity to meet some other elected officials in our community. And October 26th, I attended the CBCA Mixer at Skipholini's, which was a packed house and lots of fun. October 28th, I attended a two-year strategic planning session with the Clayton Valley Village. I was honored to be a part of that, even though I'm not part of their board. And we finalized some interesting strategic projects over the next two years. October 29th, I volunteered at the library book sale. Got to see former Mayor Keith Hayden there buying some books, thank you. And I don't know if everybody knows, but you know, obviously, we approved the land lease a couple of weeks ago. Their, the library, Library Foundation are moving their books out of the Keller House into these small containers, which you may have seen, and just adjacent to the Keller House. November 2nd, I was also at the mayor's conference in Brentwood, and I had a wonderful meeting. It's been a couple of weeks with our city manager, Brett. Thank you.
Yeah, we also were at the book sale very briefly. My kids like to buy a lot of books. Vice Mayor Diaz and I did meet with the CBCA representatives to talk about future, potential future agreements. And I attended the mayor's conference in Brentwood, which was a stunning facility. And I've had quite a few conversations with residents regarding things going on. And that is the end of my report. So that concludes item 12. Next is item 13. This is a closed session. We will be talking about public employee performance evaluation. First, I will take public comment on this item, and then I will invite everyone to leave. When the closed session is over, we will reconvene the meeting, and anything that is reportable from that will be communicated, and the only item after that would be adjournment. So first, public comment on this last item.
Mayor Juan, we do have a speaker card from Rebecca.
This is actually a test to see if I can read my own scribble written down at the last moment. Good evening, Mayor Juan, and fellow city council members, and definitely our city manager, Mr. Prebula. I just wanted to say, I know his, he's up for review tonight, and if I was in the room after closed session, I would give him an A+. I did see a comment on social media that somebody said he is dividing our city and should be fired, and that comment just absolutely floored me. I've met him a few times at his coffee meetings that he has with the public, and I found him to be very honest, forthright, intelligent, transparent, and always offering solutions to our budget problem, which is a big budget problem, which I was aware of before he was hired. I think he's a breath of fresh air, and he's someone that brings people together. I don't think he's divisive. We've had a revolving door of city managers and financial directors in the last four or five years, and I think he is exactly what we needed to help fix this city and get us on track. I, I, he's just a positive person. To be honest, I'm shocked and disappointed to see and hear so many negative comments, and I think people haven't met with him. And if you meet with him and talk with him, you, you, you see the person he is, and he brings, he brought staff that he's worked with before. If you're a good person, staff that you've worked with, if you're a bad person, a bad boss, people don't want to follow you to other jobs. So that's, that's another good sign about him. I think if we lost him, it would be a huge loss for this city. And it's difficult, we already have a reputation as having a toxic city hall with our turnover. And if we lost Brett Prebula, I think the quality of this, whoever you hired to replace him would not be as high. See, I can't read my writing because it's scribbly. I and many others greatly appreciate what he has brought to our city and trying to bring us into the 21st century with technology and getting rid of old file cabinets that the staff has to dig through. That's just unreal that we were still doing that. I should, I believe he should be receiving praise and appreciation for what he has done in such a short time here. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Prebula, for doing the job that you were hired to do. And I'm sure you don't often see it, but there's a large number of people in Clayton that are happy you're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other speaker cards?
I do, I do believe we have speakers. Jim?
Long night, council, and I do appreciate all the hard work and ethics, some effort that is. And so I do want to speak with respect to Brett. I have had to work over my, over the last 30 years of public service and working also with CFOs of Chevron and board and board directors, and I can tell you Brett is right up there with this. We're gifted to have this individual to come into our city. I had the chance probably 20, about 30 years ago, working with a legendary city manager from Concord, Ed James. So all the great work and progress you see in Concord, we take for granted. And, but Ed James came to that city, and he cleaned it up. We had gang problems, our streets and landscaping was nonexistent. It was just going straight into GNA. And so he said basically, "We're going to benchmark everything." And then he got, he told the police officers, "You're going to do community policing," got rid of the gang issues. So I can say to you, I worked with him. I did run for city council, and I was on different city task force. One was cleaning up the Monument Corridor. And so, and that was a year-long effort. And we got to meet and work with Ed James a lot. So when I met Brett, he was fantastic. He knows the knowledge of the city, and he reminds me of my dad. My dad was pretty high up in the phone company. Jim, you knew him, and he did pass last year. And, but my dad had this one belief, and that is that you treat everybody equally, the people down at the bottom to the people at the top. And his overall belief was you need to be firm, but not alienated, which is an impossible task to do for many people. And I see that with Brett. I saw the letters that were accommodating him for his work from city employees, which is very rare. Most people don't get involved like that. And so I think it was four or five letters out there, which is pretty impressive because we're a small city. So again, we're very fortunate to have him. If we were to, the other thing I want to mention is, next door, you know I'm an activist, I'm a gadfly there, and I come to the city council meetings, but that's good. I like people participating because shows we're passionate, even so we have different opinions. But I do believe there's an anti-establishment movement throughout the country, and it's also in Clayton, which was surprising to me. And to me, I'd never seen people attack in public what I've seen today attacking our city manager. And that, I just don't understand that. Why are we doing this? Why are we attacking our city manager? He just arrived. I just want to say this, I was on a school board for about five months, and that's the worst. So we talk about things out there, believe me, being at a school council meeting, you see a lot of different people speaking up. And so what I can say to you is, from that perspective, is that we can't afford to lose him because if we afford to lose him, you're going to be five to six months out getting a replacement. So again, I really appreciate all the sip and coffee chats we've had. Take care.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Mayor and council.
You know, you spoke-
I'm not gonna repeat.
I will, I will remind you that you spoke about this item at the beginning of our meeting also. But feel free.
I'm not gonna repeat all the wonderful things that have been said about Brett already this evening. I think you have seen that the community already highly values him. But what I want to emphasize is how quickly he has looked into what issues are facing our, our community, and he has come up with working plans on how we might be able to solve those. And he's working with the community in unusual ways. The meet and greet meetings that he set up hadn't been done in many, many years, and that is his attempt to get input from not only the council and, and the other bodies that report to the council, but for the residents themselves. And he does follow-up. And I have friends that have gone into city council to meet with him individually, and he makes himself available to answer their questions and to answer them sufficiently to where they're satisfied that they're getting the straight answer. I also have friends that are still on the city staff from when I was on the council, and they were getting very, very frustrated with the revolving door of managers and various department heads. And we have now seen that he is bringing some stability to our city. And he is setting the goals that I think need to be achieved, and to lose him- And to lose him would be a disservice to the future of Clayton because we would have to expect someone else to come in and start from scratch. And I, and I know that they would not be able to repeat what Brent has already achieved. And I want to see him carry through and serve Clayton the way he feels we should be served. And I certainly think he's going to be one of our best city managers ever. So encourage you to keep him in place. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, I believe you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments will be brief. And thank you for hearing me. I just wanted to say that I've just been very impressed with Mr. Prebula since he has joined. I went to several of his meet and greets and was impressed at the acumen that he possessed, possesses across so many dimensions of city management. And that didn't come, it was obvious from his discussions in these meet and greets, that it didn't come from, you know, you know, reading, cracking a book here and there. It came from being, you know, in this operational role in this city and being in that one in that city. And he's seen some best practices and some solutions to some difficult problems, including, you know, some different ways that revenue could, he mentioned some different ways that revenue could be done other than parcel taxes in, in his very first meet and greet, which I thought was interesting. So he brings ideas, fresh ideas that are potentially best-of-breed from other cities that have faced the very same things that, you know, the challenges that we face here as well. And beyond that, he's shown, you know, that he's an inspirational leader. He's drawn an entire team in, you know, we had a bunch of, a bunch of holes when we hired him, and then suddenly that one got filled, and that one got filled. And they're all people that are inspired by him, want to be here, want to stay here with him, you know. That is certainly the mark of a true leader. And, and so the fact that he has been able to bring in so much communication, both in from the community, that input from every side of the community, he has no dog in any fight. And then, and also to get information out to the community as well through these like meet and greets, it's just, it's just unprecedented in recent history. So I guess I just would conclude with, he's very brave for having signed up for a city that has, in my industry, you know, like software development, database development, we talk about something called technical debt. Technical debt is something you accumulate as you sort of like fix a product, and you make a little duct tape here and a little duct tape there to keep things, you know. After, after a period of time, technical debt prevents you from being able to do anything without it taking forever. You've got to worry about every little piece of your software breaking. He came to a city with a lot of technical debt, you know, and as his first, as his first go at this job. So that's courage. And I, I hope that he will be graded accordingly to the challenge which he has signed up for in this first role. Thanks so much for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Did you start the timer for yourself?
10 extra seconds is how long it took to walk up here. So thank you, members of the council, Mayor Juan. You all know me. My name is Dana Ayers. I am your Community Development Director. I've been here for about two years permanently, and prior to that for about seven months over the course of a couple of years between 2019 and 2020. Since I've been here as interim and as permanent, I've worked with about four different city managers in that timeframe, about four years now. I've, I missed working with one of them because I was not here. But I can say without hesitation that I have enjoyed working with, that I've liked all of the city managers that I've had a chance to work with. And of the three now that I've had a chance to work with as a permanent employee, I can say without, also without hesitation, that I've been very lucky. The two city managers that started with me in 2021, and the interim city manager that followed her, I found were both very supportive, respectful, honest. And they shared with me what they learned throughout their lives, just personally as well as professionally. And they did that with the intention that it would make me a better person in life and in my job. I'm thankful for that. And I'm thankful that I have the chance to continue to have the opportunity to work here under that same thoughtful and very intentional leadership. I worked in Napa County prior to coming here. So did Brett. I did not work with Brett. We were in the same building, so same time, different places. Clayton, however, was my first experience working with him. And much like his predecessors, he is supportive, respectful, honest. And he sets a high standard of performance for himself. This inspires others to do the same. Like athletes who push themselves to go a little bit beyond in order to make themselves better and stronger, those challenges are what make us better at what we do, more knowledgeable, and better able to serve the communities that we sign up for. I am grateful for Brett's humor, his advice, his sincerity, his integrity, his trust in me, and my abilities and my desire to do my job the best I can. So to this council, I'd like to thank all of you for inviting him to be part of the Clayton team. And I thank you for your time. And look at that.
Nailed it. I think we have one hand up.
You'll have to give me a second to turn my own clock off. Roy, I will momentarily give you permission to speak. Please unmute your microphone. You will have three minutes to address the council.
Hi. A lot of comments about Brett. I hope you can hear me clearly. And that's a good thing. I don't know all that you don't about some of the, I want to say some negative things about him altogether. To be honest, I need to know more about Brett. And I'm a high-tech guy, global companies, leadership roles. And I kind of look at all the, you know, any organization with respect to deliverables. What are you delivering? And, and so that's kind of how I view things at the big picture level and mutual trust and respect. And the other thing too, just a quick hit on the, all that discussion on the concerts in the Grove and the different events. I just move that over to Brett altogether. Let him own that, number one. And council just serve as advise counsel and advise and counsel role. And let Brett, I think somebody said that he, he elected to do it, let him do it. Use your time to do, you know, other things, working the community, et cetera, on the part of the council members. So I would highly suggest that let Brett handle it, period. And with respect, I think one of the council members said that there was, that I'm glad, something to the effect, I'm glad this is captured on video, you know, discussion item or something, you know, you know, eyes wide open, right? That every, you know, you all are on video. We all are on, you know, recorded, you know, video and audio, et cetera. So it's, you know, there's some of these, some of the commentary, some of the comments that are made are just, you know, and I think I've mentioned this before, but it gets really trite and old, pejorative, negative in nature. This is about conducting business. This is about connecting with clients. This is about deliverables. And, and you know, so I think of the council, in my opinion, you guys need to back up. And, you know, what are you there for? And it's like, you know, it's like, you know, brinkmanship almost. It's like, ah, and so stop it, you know, just my opinion. I'd like to see some more, you know, some more collaboration, civility, not only among the community that we've spoken about, but among the council itself. Be cool. Be cool. You know, get the job done. Thank you. Bye.
Seeing no other hands.
I do have one more speaker card.
You do? All right. Is it from Amy?
It is. Good evening, Mayor Juan, council members. Amy Walker. I'm the Executive Assistant to the City Manager and also the HR Manager. So I'm talking to you in kind of this interesting capacity, sort of wearing three different hats. There's this saying that I heard a long time ago, "Don't pick a job, pick a boss. Pick somebody who you would want to work for." I've known Brett for over 10 years. We've worked together in a few different capacities. So when he invited me to come join the Clayton team, of course, I was going to say yes. He, I don't necessarily want to belabor all the, the flower feedback that you've already heard. What I will say is that when I came into this organization, I was aware that there was history that predated both of us. And one of the things that seemed to be a recurring theme was that some staff previously felt that they didn't have full agency over their jobs, or that they were limited with what resources were provided to them to do a good job. And so in talking with people and then just watching the dynamic between Brett and staff, it was really amazing to see people light up, to not be fearful about making mistakes, about asking for something that they really needed, and taking chances. And so I'll just keep it there. I just want to say that I'm really honored to be part of the Clayton team. I'm honored to be working with Brett, and I think he's a tremendous leader. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speaker cards and no more hands raised on Zoom.
All right. With that, I will close public comment and invite everyone to exit the building, or the room. You can stay in the building if you'd like.
And Mayor Juan, if I can just announce, I'll do my best. For those who are on Zoom, I will be ending the Zoom meeting. You may continue to watch the adjournment online through the city website.
Thank you. We are returning from closed session, item 13, with no reportable actions. Next item is item 14, adjournment. So we are adjourned. The next regular scheduled meeting is November 21. And Vice Mayor Diaz will be presiding. Good night.